Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Dixon.
Chair, I advise that councillor Fiona Cunningham will be absent today, and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that councillor Cunningham be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,748th meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of October 2024, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon, seconded by councillor Gibney, that the minutes of the 4,748th meeting of council, held on the 29th of October 2024, be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it. I would now like to call on Mr Thomas Spencer, who is going to address the chamber on support for a podcast to help autistic communities in Brisbane. When you are ready, Mr Spencer, you have five minutes, and when you're ready, you may start.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Lord Mayor, and councillors, thank you for inviting me to this wonderful chamber. I have a little story I want to share with the whole audience. It's a project I want to do in Brisbane to help people with autism. As you can tell, I have autism myself, and I want to help those that have troubles looking for work, especially myself being a living experience. And the reason I'm here in chamber today is to share my view on all of your communities, to help every autistic community person in Brisbane. And I want to do this pain podcast, so I want to start off a little and work my way up to the federal government, so all three levels of government. And the reason I want to do this is I want to help people in all of your communities. Because, as a living experience with autism myself, it's hard for me to look for work, very, very hard. So today, with the five minutes I've got to spend with all of yous, I wanted to talk about this project I want to do for all of your communities. So not just Chelmsford where I live, but each and every one of your communities. Because it's very important to me to help each and every one of the Brisbane nights that have autism. So that is why I'm here today, to talk to all of yous about helping your autistic community. For it is very important to me to get the word out in this beautiful city of ours, and especially for the people who, like myself, have trouble looking for work. So I'm here today in front of these lovely human beings I call councillors, and Lord Mayor, to get that awareness out. But like I said, I want to start off a little and work my way up to the federal government. For this job I want to do is a pain podcast for people in your communities that have autism like myself. And that's why I'm here today, to share my story with the whole lot of yous, to share how important it is for me as an individual in Chelmsford that has autism and is having troubles looking for work. So today, I wanted to share my story with all of yous, and to tell you my life experience trying to look for work. So I'm here today to tell yous all that I would like each and every one of you councillors to talk to my lovely councillor Denise Perry and her crew. So I want feedback from today's visit from all of yous, including you, Lord Mayor. Because this is important to me as a resident of this beautiful city of ours, that all of yous work alongside me from all parts of this beautiful city of ours, to help me achieve this goal of helping your autistic communities in Brisbane. So today, as I talk to yous about what I want to do, it's very important that I tell yous how I feel. Because, and as yous all know, in your communities, you would have your autistic members in your community. So it's important for me to share why I want to do this podcast with all of yous today. Anyhow, I am really grateful that all of yous are here to listen to my story, and I really appreciate all of yous to get on board to help me achieve my goal, to help each and every one of yous autistic communities in your wards. And especially you, Lord Mayor, I definitely want you to help me achieve that goal, and I know you definitely want to help me in this goal, I know you do. The whole lot of yous, the whole lot of yous, I know yous all want to achieve this goal for me. So I want to wrap it up and just say, I want to thank all of yous for letting me come into chamber. I also want to thank Madam Chair for letting me have this opportunity to talk to all of yous. Thank you so much.
Point of order, Madam Chairman. One moment. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. In recognition of the unique challenges that Thomas faces in speaking before us today, which I know is a big challenge, I would ask that we move an extension of time for a further five minutes, so he could talk about the podcast.
Seconded. I'll just check, Thomas, do you want to speak?
I want to keep going, Madam Chair.
Just checking that he's comfortable. It has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey for an extension of five minutes. All those in favour say to talk about the podcast.
Aye.
Thank you. Those against? So Thomas, now, Thomas, can you just press your, can you just press your microphone? Just one moment, I think we've got to reset it.
Okay.
When you're ready, Thomas.
So councillors, Lord Mayor, the reason I want to do this podcast is, and I thank councillor Johnson for that, and I thank you for giving me an extra five minutes, I appreciate that. So the reason I want to do this pain podcast is, it's very hard for people like myself, and you guys would be aware with some of your residents in Brisbane, how hard it is to get employment for people that are on the spectrum. And like I said to you in the five minutes before, I am a living experience of that. So my goal is to help each and every one of your autistic communities that live the same way as me get a paid job. Because it's important for all of us to get a paid job, all of us. Thank you. And so for a good example, let me use me as a good example. So when I got my diagnosis of autism, I was 29 years old, and it took me a while to accept it, but that's not what I'm here for. I'm here to tell you why about the podcast, but yeah, that's okay. So people like me, it's hard, and sometimes I get really teary eyes about talking about it because it really hurts me as a citizen of this city, really hurts me. But the reason for this pain podcast is that I want each and every one of you guys as people who have autism to have a better life like the rest of yous in the chamber here today. So that's why I want to do this podcast. Because, and I say it from living experience myself, it is so hard to get a job. I mean, it is so hard to the point that constant meltdowns in my life at home. And I usually don't tell anyone about my meltdowns, but it's a good example of why I want to do this podcast, to help each and every one of you constituents in this chamber's autistic community to prove to the world that we are exactly like the rest of yous. And I have this attitude since my diagnosis back when I was 29, I'm 37, 10 and 38 in February. So this is why, and I'm here today to address this, because it's important to me, and I want each and every one of yous, including Lord Mayor, to achieve my goal. Because it's important to me to prove to the world that autistic people are just like the rest of yous. And I will never change that attitude of thinking, because that's who I am, a special person that wants to help each and every one of the autistic communities here in Brisbane. But yet, I'm here telling you my story, and I feel good about it, because at least you guys are agreeing with me. I see some of yous nodding, which is making me happy. It's telling me that each and every one of yous do care for people like me, including you, Lord Mayor, I see the smile on your face too. So that's why I want to do that podcast. I want to prove to the world, but not just the world, my own country, that I am just like, and me and the rest of the autistic people in Brisbane are exactly the same as you guys. And I might sound mean, and I might sound mean saying it, but that's how I see it. And that's why I want to do this podcast with the help of the state and the federal government. I want the whole three of yous to join in with me to help your communities. And that's why I am here today to talk about my pain podcast from all three levels of government. And yet, here I am, almost crying because I'm excited. So I want to thank all of yous, the whole lot of yous, for letting me come in today and let me have my say. So that's why I want to do this pain podcast with all three levels of government by my side. Everyone, thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. I'm now going to call upon councillor Howard to respond.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr Spencer, can I call you Thomas, because everybody else is, and I'd love to call you Thomas, is that all right?
You can call me Tom.
Well, 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 thank you. Can I say that you have made your community very proud today by coming in and addressing us, and I think everybody in this chamber has loved listening to you, and I don't know, I think you are the very first, I've been here about 12 years, I think you're the very first person I've heard speak for 10 minutes, not five.
I'm one of the very ones who have.
You're rare, you are rare. You are rare. But it was amazing, and can I just say to you, I just love listening to your story, and it is fantastic for all of us in this chamber to hear the lived experiences, which is why having public speakers come and talk to us is so important, and what you've done for us today and what you've done for your community is really, really special, so thank you. And I know councillor Perry had a little word to me beforehand, and she speaks very highly, she speaks very highly of you and your tireless advocacy on behalf of people with autism. So she tells me what a great advocate you are, so again, and we've experienced that today, all of us, and so, well, there were a few horses, there were a few horses running around a track in Melbourne just before we arrived, so there we go. So, so Thomas, she also tells me that you stand up on local issues in your area, and that you're always trying to improve your local community, and we thank you for that. And I could hear today how proud you are of Brisbane, and we, all of us here, are immensely proud. The Lord Mayor is always proud of all of the things that happen in Brisbane, and I could see him nodding his head as you were speaking as well as you could, and so I think that's just absolutely amazing. So raising awareness with the Brisbane community about challenges that people with autism face, and how we can help alleviate some of that day-to-day pressures, and we're very happy to support you with that. So Brisbane City Council is committed to improving accessibility for all of our residents, regardless of their ageability or background, we're very proud of that. And I really want to once again thank you, thank you very much for coming in and talking to us today. We really look forward to working with you, and I know that there's going to be some wonderful changes within Brisbane because of your talk here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Howard, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Thank you councillor Howard, and thank you, Mr Spencer, for coming in today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it to that, so thank you.
Thank you. committees? Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Standards Committee. Councillor Hutton, last week we saw the Greens/Labor coalition of Chaos in action, defending violent and antisocial behaviour in our parks. Can you please update the chamber on the steps that we are taking to keep the community safe, and why this is necessary?
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Adaman for the question. Chair, on this side of the chamber, we've been warning residents about the risks posed by the Coalition of Chaos. Over the past year, we've seen them align on a number of issues, and just last week, they came together again on a matter impacting the safety of our most vulnerable residents. It's no surprise to this chamber that the Greens often encourage and overlook antisocial behaviour. Yet last week, we saw councillor Collier and the Labor Party join forces with them to call for the restoration of the power to infrastructure that was, let me be very clear, never publicly available. To obtain this power, people had been breaking in and vandalising our barbecues and switchboards, overloading the powerboards, and hotwiring with items like fridges, microwaves, and electric scooters, which has resulted in electrical fires. This is not only an issue for those in the park, but for the entire community. To make matters worse, councillor Collier last week went on to say that the Labor Party do not agree with the decision to keep our community and officers safe. This is extraordinary from those opposite. The troubling rise in violence and aggressive behaviour in our parks, especially places like Musgrave Park, has turned them into no-go zones in our city. This is a serious concern for everyone, including our officers, who have reduced their visits to some of these spaces for their very own safety. I've heard numerous stories about our officers being confronted by aggressive and abusive individuals when entering Musgrave Park to undertake essential work, including just emptying the bin. Residents and charities have also raised their concerns that the situation is getting worse. Along with the violent and antisocial behaviour, council has been forced to spend more than $25,000 recently repairing damaged barbecues and lighting at the expense to the rate payer. Chair, today I have been informed that there has been substantial damage done to the toilet block at Musgrave Park overnight, with drug paraphernalia at the site and substantial blockages in the toilets. On Friday, the Queensland Fire Department asked council to return the power to the barbecues in Musgrave because of the dangerous unauthorised fires. This work was undertaken straight away, which meant the barbecues can be used, however the locked power outlets remain switched off. Labor is supposed to be the champions of the workers, yet I wonder if they've actually spoken to our officers and the unions about their safety concerns. I also wonder if they've consulted with the new Labor state member for South Brisbane. I would hope that her position will be to stand with the community, stand with our officers, and stand with the police to keep our parks safe. I've been disappointed to see the soft approach from the Coalition of Chaos on the antisocial behaviour, but I'm not surprised. This situation has been created by the previous Labor state government's soft-on-crime approach, and a decade of under-investment in housing.
One moment, councillor Hutton. You noted refrain from calling out while the councillor hasn't finished, I'm stopping to make sure that you are quiet while you listen to another councillor on their feet. As I've always said, if you have something to say, you can say it in general business. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair, they do not like hearing the truth. Meanwhile, the Greens' policies to defund the police, decriminalise hard drugs, and even condone shoplifting, while also blocking new housing projects, only deepens the current issues we face. Chair, it's cruel that they are opposing housing, it's cruel that they want people to live in tents, and it's cruel that the only solution they have is USB chargers in parks. In contrast, Madam Chair, our council remains deeply committed to a compassionate approach for those genuinely experiencing homelessness. Our officers continue to work with people in need, connecting them with housing services provided by the state government, helping to ensure they can get the access to support they require. Chair, if they had been elected in March, the Coalition of Chaos would have turned parts of our city into no-go zones due to crime. This side of the chamber will always stand up for our residents and ensuring they are safe. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, a simple internet search shows that many businesses, including Telstra, Energy Australia, and Foxtel, provide pensioner or concession card exemptions for paper bill fees. This is also the case for utility companies like Urban Utilities and Unity Water. Other councils in South East Queensland also do not charge pensioners a paper bill fee. Lord Mayor, doesn't this mean that your paper bill fee is in fact nothing more than a pensioner tax?
Lord Mayor.
Well, Madam Chair, a simple internet search would show that Telstra nor any other organisation mentioned there provides a massive pensioner discount
That's right.
of up to 40%
That's right.
or $1,248, which we do. And so Labor, once again, conveniently ignores the facts, and will try and focus on $1.98, which is actually less than the cost of sending out the letter, when a generous 40% rebate is provided, the most generous in Australia, $1,248 for a full pensioner, and they're focused on $1.98. It goes to show, it goes to show why they are in opposition, because they can't see the wood for the trees. They focus on petty politics rather than the real issues, and they try and scare pensioners, and then they also try and suggest that pensioners are incapable of signing up for e-rates, which is offensive, it's quite offensive.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor, councillor Collier, and councillor Cassidy, I caution you about calling out, I've already asked you not to do that while councillors are on their feet. Lord Mayor.
Now, interestingly enough, when the paper bill fee comes in, it is entirely avoidable. It's entirely, no one has to pay it, not a single person has to pay that fee. And it's why tens of thousands of extra people have signed over to e-rates already.
One moment, Lord Mayor, I caution you again, both councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Lord Mayor.
It's why tens of thousands of people have signed over to e-rates already, because it's a simple thing to do, to avoid the need to pay for a paper bill. Now, the reality is, on the 1st of July, when the new financial year started, we didn't just keep the highest pensioner rates rebate in Australia, we actually increased it, and we increased it by $23. The new fee for paper bills comes in on the 1st of January, and so already, already the rate payers of Brisbane have benefited from an increase in their rebate of $23, over and above what was already given last year, which was already the highest rebate provided. Now, we know councillor Cassidy would probably prefer to be a Morton Bay councillor than a Brisbane councillor, because he keeps looking to the north. He asked why I'm obsessed, it's because he's obsessed. This is the guy who moves motions in this chamber, congratulating Morton Bay Council time and time again. He's got an obsession with Morton Bay, and so I'd simply say, how does he sleep at night when he knows that Morton Bay only gives $250 to their pensioners when we give $1,248, almost $1,000 more, and he's trying to make a thing out of $1.98? Wow. Like, if that's any sign of the wrong priorities and an out-of-touch, tired opposition, I don't know what is.
Further questions? Councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Chair of the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the incoming Chris O'Leary government will soon commence an independent review into games venues. Meanwhile, the Green Labor Coalition of Chaos has put politics ahead of legacy. Can you please update the chamber on this council's position and any alternatives you may be aware of?
One moment, Deputy Mayor, before I call you. I'll wait till the chamber is quiet, and I warn all councillors to not call out while other councillors are speaking. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you councillor Dixon for the question, because it was a question that councillor Cassidy has already asked me today, so I thought it would be a great opportunity to actually set the record straight.
That's your third caution, councillor Collier. The next will be a formal. Deputy Mayor.
Our position on this side of the chamber is absolutely clear, and it has been clear from the beginning. We back the games as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor, sorry. Councillor Collier, as you have failed to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, I hereby warn you, in accordance with section 216 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, that failing to comply with the request may result in an audit being issued. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We back the games as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to deliver generational infrastructure, to deliver better transport, to keep Brisbane moving, and to deliver a legacy that benefits all residents for generations to come. And that's what hosting the games is all about. That's why the South East Queensland Council of Mayors banded together back in 2015 to pursue this green and gold opportunity, and that's the promise we made to the community. Brisbane had the longest lead time for an Olympic and Paralympic Games in history, but the former state government burnt 1,200 days playing petty politics, making Olympics... the former state government burnt 1,200 days playing petty politics, making Olympic sport out of being petty. The venues' costs were plucked out of thin air, and independent advice was ignored and all the decisions were being made behind closed doors. And what did we see 10 days ago? Queensland voted for a fresh start. And within 100 days, we will see a comprehensive plan from the Christopher Lee government, and doing this so will restore faith and trust in the process. Brisbane residents finally have a state government that will work with us, not against us, and will look forward to working with Premier Christopher Lee to keep Brisbane moving. But those opposite still don't have a position. They didn't have a position seven months ago, they didn't have a position in November last year when the Labor's Lord Mayor candidate was asked. The headline for Tracy Price was "Labor's Brisbane Lord Merrill Candidate Still Deciding on a Position." Well, we're still waiting.
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor. Councillor. Councillor Johnston, you fail to have suitable meeting conduct by calling out and yelling out a question over the top of everybody and over the top of the speaker. So in accordance with section 21.8 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting.
Point of order.
And I also-
That's outrageous. You're not following your own process here. You've cautioned councillor Collier three times. I don't even get a caution?
Councillor, do not call out over the top of me. You know very well why you have been given that reprimand. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Thank you. During that interjection, councillor Strunk was calling out, councillor Massey was calling out, councillor Griffiths was calling out. Why am I the only councillor that has been warned? Not warned, no warning. I've had unsuitable meeting conduct noted in the minutes.
There is no, nothing in the Meeting's Local Law is to me warning you or cautioning you. I do it as a courtesy to make you realise, but-
You haven't even given me a warning.
I am not going to uphold-
But why aren't you taking action against the other councillors, is my question.
I am not going to uphold your point of order.
Because you're biased.
And councillor Griffiths, you are cautioned. It is up to the Chair to decide the severity of the reprimanding conduct. We'll continue with the meeting. Councillors, again, I remind you all to not call out and show respect if you have- councillor Griffiths. Councillors. Thank you, councillor Johnston. I do not uphold your point of order. And you will remain quiet while councillors are speaking. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not quite sure if, I don't think I've spoken for two minutes 16, is that correct? Or, yeah? Okay. Thank you. Well, through the Labor's entire campaign, we saw no vision, we saw no fresh ideas, we were clear views on the important issues were missing. Stumbling and bumbling their way through questions, we all know that the Olympics is a state thing, I haven't decided where I stand, I haven't formed a view on what's best. Is the hand side from a question for councillor, oh, not councillor, I wanted it to be councillor, Tracy Price, but it's not good enough. And I call on councillor Cassidy to settle this through you, Madam Chair, once and for all. What is their position? Councillor Cassidy, through you, Madam Chair, you can't sit on the fence any longer. It's just not fair to the residents of Brisbane. At least we know where the Greens anarchist, self-declared anarchist John O'Shaughnessy stood. Not only did he support CUSAC, he actually claimed that it was his idea. This is official Greens policy. And now we see councillor Chong Wah who's conjuring up some kind of conspiracy theory that we're not being transparent and honest. While the only conspiracy theory that has any truth to it is Greens and Labor will have to form a coalition if they want to keep any kind of relevance in Brisbane, confirmed by councillor Cassidy's hero and mentor, Lord Mayor Jim Sawley, backed up by the former councillor David Hitchcliff, who graced us with his presence last week in this chamber as well. So tell us, through you, Madam Chair, tell us, councillor Cassidy, will your Greens/Labor Coalition of Chaos be supporting the $1.6 billion-plus black hole revamp into CUSAC? Do you support knocking down Koala Habitat for a four-week event? Do you think that $1.6 billion on temporary infrastructure represents good value for money? Because we have been nothing but upfront about our priorities for residents in Brisbane. It's time for councillor Cassidy to come clean, for councillor Chong Wah to come clean, to tell Brisbane what the Greens and Labor Coalition plans are, because I can tell you right now-
Point of order.
-CUSAC is not the answer.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
To answer the Deputy Mayor's question, three questions, no, no, no.
Thank you, councillor.
Point of order.
Deputy Mayor, point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move a motion to sus-
councillor Johnston.
I'm sorry. Councillor Adams, do you want to do it?
Point of order, councillor-
Councillor Adams was just displaying, what is it, unsuitable meeting conduct by shouting out across the chamber while another councillor was talking. You'll have to warn or caution or reprimand. Councillor Adams, I'm sure, Chair.
No, I don't uphold that point.
Of course not!
I move the suspension of standing orders in order to enable me to move an urgency motion calling on the LNP councillors to immediately advise the Brisbane public what their preferred stadium is for the Olympics in 2032.
Seconded. Councillor Johnston has moved to suspend standing orders, seconded by councillor Massey. This is a procedural motion, so I'll now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no.
Division!
The noes have it. Who seconded it? Who called division? A division has been called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Those in favour, those to my right, and against to my left. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being eight in favour and 18 against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Please resume your seats quietly, councillors. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and with the 45 seconds left, I'm happy to answer the questions because it's exactly the same answer as the Lord Mayor gave last week, the answer I gave this morning, the answer he gave to the media today. CUSAC is a terrible idea. The Christopher Lee government agrees, and the public agree, and the independent experts agree. We want to keep Brisbane moving, and in the absence of any clear position over there that has been stated in public, they obviously want CUSAC. But we need to hit the reset button. We want to see all options back on the table to ensure this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to host the games is truly a legacy.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. As you know, one of the best times of the year for tree planting is in spring, yet council has a backlog of almost 10,000 trees waiting to be planted, including almost 3,000 community requests, mainly for street trees. According to council officers, there has been a directive not to plant trees until autumn, and that is March, April, May next year. Who has given this directive? And why is there such a backlog of tree planting requests when you have allegedly provided funding in the budget in June for important tree planting work?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I don't accept the premise of the question, and as we've seen time and time again, councillor Johnston asks questions that are not based on fact, so I will have a look at this matter. Time and time again, we've seen that. She's made claims in this chamber that have been later shown to be absolutely inaccurate, and so I've learnt to verify everything she says, and I will be doing that. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Givney.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Chair of Communities and the Arts Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shrima Council is investing in creating thriving communities across our city. Can you please update the chamber on the latest project helping our lifestyle in the Bayside be even better?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Givney for the question. And I know that councillor Givney has been eagerly awaiting the completion of this project, so council is excited about the upcoming reopening of Winnen Municipal Hall on Monday, the 18th of November. First constructed over 111 years ago, the Winnen Municipal Hall has withstood a lot of wild weather during its time, including floods in recent years, and it was time for a facelift, Madam Chair. Now, the Shrima Council is committed to the preservation of places in our suburbs, which is why we chose to deliver this important refurbishment. The Winnen Municipal Hall closed in late October 2023 and has since undergone a full roof replacement, water damage repairs in the main hall, a full replacement of entrance stairs, and an electrical upgrade throughout the building. Originally opened back in 1913, this iconic Winnen venue has been host to countless free and low-cost community events. From dance performances to meetings for local organisations, this community asset has always been valued by its surrounding residents. Now, prior to its temporary closure, Winnen Municipal Hall was one of the most popular community halls to hire. In the same suburb, Winnen Community Centre is currently our most popular hall to hire, which demonstrates just how valued these community halls are to residents, particularly those in councillor Givney's ward. I'm sure her residents will be thrilled at the reopening of the Winnen Municipal Hall, and it will be eager to use the revamped facility. Through you, Madam Chair, I'm sure councillor Givney is also very excited that the Winnen Hall is reopening and that she can't wait to help spread the word. Winnen Municipal Hall is just one of the fantastic local community halls and facilities that Brisbane City Council has available to hire. No matter where in Brisbane you choose to live, there's bound to be a council-owned and managed community hall nearby for you to hire, and we know that residents love to hire them, Madam Chair. In the 2023-24 financial year alone, our community halls were hired over 430,000 times. For this financial year, we've already had over 117,000 bookings, and we're on trend to exceed the previous year. Hiring a hall has also never been easier, Madam Chair. Our council website provides users with an easy way to find a hall that suits their particular needs and to check the availability online. From weddings to musicians to cultural events, our community halls can cater for it. Pleasingly, customer satisfaction from users of our community halls is also consistently high. Both the previous and current financial years have a satisfaction rate of 94%, which just shows that what great community assets our halls are. One of the things that makes our halls so great is not just how accessible they are in terms of locality, but also in their cost to residents and community organisations. For a small fee, far below commercial rates, individuals, private groups, and community organisations are able to book and hire a hall that suits their needs and the number of their attendees. Commercial events, businesses, or government bodies are also able to hire our council-owned and managed community facilities for a cost more suitable to these entities. This equitable fee structure is just another example of the Shrima Council's sensible fiscal approach. We will always prioritise keeping costs down for Brisbane residents whilst ensuring that we can afford to provide premium services and high-quality community facilities. We know that the refurbishment of the Winnen Municipal Hall is a fantastic example of this, and we're so excited that this fantastic community hall will be reopened to the public soon. And I would like to place on the record my sincere thanks to the team that made this happen. It's been a long journey for the Winnen Municipal Hall, and I know that councillor Givney's been very patient, and through you, Madam Chair, I know that her residents are very much looking forward to returning to this much-loved council facility. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. And Lord Mayor, I'll bring you back to the real issues for residents in my ward. Despite repeated requests to council, grass in the Dunndella Recreation Reserve on Peacock Cock Street in Durack is over two metres high and littered with illegal dumping. This is a lack, there is a definite lack of basic park maintenance, and simply not good enough for the suburbs I represent. Lord Mayor, my question to you is, why does your LNP administration continuously ignore the needs of residents in the outer suburbs?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I think ditto to the former response to councillor Johnston, because there's another one who is very, has a very long rap sheet of making stuff up, and that's councillor Griffiths. But look, you know, I'm not specifically aware of this one, but from the sounds of it, it sounded like a nature reserve, not a park. And, you know, councillor Griffiths has been around long enough, in fact, longer than anyone else, to know there's a difference between a park and a nature reserve. He knows very well what that difference is. A nature reserve is largely bushland, and if there's rotten grass in bushland, surprise, surprise, because that's bush.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Just clarify, it's actually a park? It's an owned park? I've checked that.
Thank you. And I remind you also, councillor Griffiths, to not call out. You've asked a question. If you've got further things to say, wait till general business, please. Let the Lord Mayor be heard in silence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, I'll confirm once again to verify the veracity of the claims that have been made. But in the meantime, I have a question for councillor Griffiths. Does he support the destruction of Koala bushland in his area for CUSAC? Because that's Labor's policy, as far as we can understand. They're quite happy to support CUSAC and the destruction of bushland in his area.
One moment, please. One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillors. One moment, Lord Mayor, please. What's your point of order, councillor Griffiths?
No, I was clearly in the paper opposing it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Point of order.
Sorry, Lord. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Councillor Krista Adams was audibly shouting across the chamber-
Councillor.
-for an extended period of time. Why has she not been named, warned, or her unsuitable meeting conduct noted in the-
I do not uphold your point of order.
You didn't even let me finish. So Krista can shout, but no one else can, is that right?
Please refer to councillors by their proper names, and I do not uphold your point of order, and I've just asked all councillors on both sides of the room to please remain quiet. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. But back to the premise of the question, we will obviously verify what's happening there, but I can tell you, when it comes to our grass- But I can tell you, when it comes to our grass-cutting services, they are doing a great job right across the city, making sure that our city and suburbs are well-maintained, with parks that are well-maintained. That's why all of us as councillors get great feedback about the parks and the quality of our parks and the maintenance of our parks. And, you know, councillor Griffiths, obviously, he's been, he's gone full, you know, bush to find a section that it's apparently not being maintained. And good on him. It's good to get out and about in his ward. But the reality is, our budget for grass-cutting continues to be supported. We continue to spend 68% of our budget in the suburbs. Sorry, 86. Thank you for that correction, 86. I'm obviously, I've got my numbers around the wrong way. So...
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Councillor Krista Adams is now shouting abusive comments across this chamber, saying, "You're now dyslexic today." These are inappropriate comments.
Councillor Johnston.
And, Madam Chairman, you must take action about her repeated interjections.
I do not uphold your point of order, and I am the one running the chamber, not you. Deputy Mayor. Lord Mayor, sorry.
I didn't take offence to councillor Adams' claims. It's all right. So 86% of the budget has been invested in the suburbs.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor.
I'd just like a ruling if dyslexic today is an appropriate comment for the community of Brisbane that have dyslexia. I'm just asking for a ruling on the comment.
I do not uphold your point of order. You should all be listening to what Lord Mayor has to say and not calling out. He is the one on his feet and actually speaking to the chamber. Councillors. There is one person who is speaking, and it's the Lord Mayor, and I ask you to be quiet while he is doing so. Lord Mayor.
But, Madam Chair, we've seen for months and months and months, Labour councillors crying wolf when it comes to what's been done in the suburbs. They made all kinds of diabolical claims about maintenance in the suburbs, which have all been proven to be inaccurate, and which the residents of Brisbane saw through when they voted just a few months ago in the election. Their campaign was all about, all about the $400 million in savings we made. They made their position and their claims very clear. The people of Brisbane definitely heard those claims, because it was, they spent, I think, $2 million bucks on advertising. And so they heard them, but then they rejected them because they knew that it just wasn't true. They could see it in their own area. They could see that this council invests in the suburbs, that our administration invests in the suburbs. They could see it, and they can still see it today. And they'll continue to see it in the future. And so councillor Griffiths, good on you for going bush. Good on you for finding some illegal dumping. I hope you've reported it, because we're keen to deal with the legal dumping, just as we're keen to make sure that our parks aren't becoming no-go zones with dangerous behaviour, antisocial behaviour, with stabbings, with fires. Labour councillors don't care about those things. They don't care at all. They want to turn a blind eye. They're quite happy to allow those things to continue on in parks. But, you know, making claims about a bushland reserve, you know, once again, it's a sign that they've got their priorities wrong.
Further speakers. councillor Wolf.
Thanks, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, while the Greens had a busy council recess opposing more homes for Brisbane residents, the Shirena Council is working to approve quality housing across Brisbane. Can you please update the chamber on the latest housing approval data across Brisbane?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to councillor Wolf for the question. Madam Chair, it is no secret to the chamber that Brisbane has experienced significant growth over recent years, which has created significant challenges with respect to housing. There are a range of industry and construction constraints impacting the supply of housing, including low productivity, high labour costs, inflation, material costs, and labour shortages. And yet, time and again, we see the Greens oppose housing initiatives and projects at every level they have, or every opportunity they have, and across all three levels of government. Whether this be through opposing key developments in the right locations and zonings, such as South Brisbane and Milton, or whether it be policy fantasies that will drive investors from the market and reduce rental supply, the Greens have it all wrong on housing. The Greens would have the public think that it is only the super wealthy that invest in property. However, this is demonstrably incorrect. Recent data compiled by the ATO reveals a typical investor is far from the stereotype of the greedy landlord. Schoolteacher investors outnumbered IT workers, truck drivers edged out solicitors, and police also made the top 20, showing that everyday, hard-working Australians provide homes for the nation's renters. The recent state election shows that Greens' policy is not resonating with residents. So while the Greens are opposing housing initiatives, this side of the chamber will continue to support the delivery of housing for all residents, whether this be through providing more latent supply via our development approval process, through city planning settings that promote and stimulate housing, assisting community housing providers, or supporting homelessness services. For many years, council has provided a significant pipeline of latent housing supply, available to those who wish to provide housing, and we currently have nine years of supply available. Madam Chair, October was a big month for the development approval team. 342 development applications have been completed. This included 51 development applications approved for a material change of use for a residential use. This has yielded a net increase, just in October, of 3,335 dwellings last month alone. So let me repeat that. 3,335 dwellings approved in October. In the context of these particular approvals, there were a number of build-to-rent components, including 905 residential units in Newstead, Longland Street, Newstead, a further 735 in Ross Street, Newstead, and importantly, a Brisbane Housing Company development in Coopers Plains that will see 54 residential units operate under a build-to-rent model. Not only is council approving significant numbers of development approvals, but we're also doing it in rapid, quick time. The BEATAS State of the City report indicated that Brisbane approves DAs 38% faster than Sydney or Melbourne. So Brisbane City Council is demonstrably doing all it can to support housing in the city. However, development approvals and providing latent supply is only one piece of the puzzle. Between 2019 and 2023, council approved more than 57,000 homes. However, just half of those homes have been built. These stark figures show how tough it is to build in the current environment and demonstrate why all levels of government must act. To help get things moving, we are incentivising the construction of new homes by reducing infrastructure charges for eligible projects. We are creating thousands of additional homes through suburban renewal in underutilised areas close to transport and employment hubs, and the Stones Corner Renewal Precinct is a good case in point. We have 100% permanent and ongoing reduction in infrastructure charges for registered community housing providers, and importantly, we've recently provided assistance to two projects in Chermside and one in Stones Corner. The net contribution or financial support that council is providing to these three projects alone is north of $2 million. We are also looking to reduce car parking requirements in key locations around the city, which will have a direct impact on the cost of building new homes. So the Shirena Council has a strong track record when it comes to ensuring Brisbane has adequate and diverse housing supply, while ensuring growth occurs in a sustainable way and our city's unique character is preserved. Thank you.
That now ends question time. We now move to the Establishment and Coordination Committee report. Lord Mayor. Just one moment. Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report, Monday 28th of October 2024.
Madam Chair, I move the report for the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 28th of October 2024 to be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor for the meeting held on Monday, the 28th of October 2024 to be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask that item A is taken seriatum for debate and voting purposes. I'd ask that item D is taken seriatum for debate and voting purposes. And I'd ask that item E is taken seriatum for debate and voting purposes.
So just clarifying, item A, D, and E for voting, for debate and voting, all taken separately, but item B and C together. Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Before I move on, I've become aware of a technical error, which meant that not all councillors have been able to get access to clause E of the E and C report. And so effectively, there's a large number of documents that have to be uploaded for councillors viewing. And unfortunately, not all councillors were able to view all of the documents. So in fairness, I would like to move that clauses D and E from today's E and C report to be withdrawn and then represented again at the next council meeting on Tuesday, the 12th of November.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor for items D and E to be withdrawn and represented at the next meeting. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. That's carried. Lord Mayor. So, Lord Mayor, speaking, just a reminder that we will now speak to item A separately.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
And then vote, and then move to B and C.
Okay. Well, before I move on, and before we go on to the items and also the usual updates that I provide, it seems that opposition councillors want to talk about the Olympics and Olympic stadiums. And so I'm more than happy to repeat exactly what I said last week and exactly what I said this morning, which is, all options need to be on the table. Oh, councillor Johnston thinks it's funny. She was here last week when I said exactly that. Maybe she was doing something else. Maybe she wasn't listening. But that's exactly what I said last week. All options, read my lips, all options need to be on the table. That includes everything except for CUSAC, basically. So that includes, is there a better way to do the GABA? Because the previous proposal was costly and disruptive. There's got to be a better way. Is there a better way? It's sure, it's certain in my mind that the previous government did not look at that appropriately. They completely botched it. Maybe now that the process can be given to the experts for further analysis, there could be a better way. Victoria Park needs to be on the table. It needs to be on the table, and Hamilton North Shore needs to be on the table. And while you're looking, have a look at Albion again as well, because that was the original proposal. That was the original proposal before the state government politicking stepped in the way and threw it all off. I also wanted to point out that there's been some interesting narrative around Olympic venues that has happened. Now, in the beginning, 84% of venues either existed or could be done through temporary facilities, right? So 84% of the venues required were either already there or could be provided through temporary facilities. Now, an example of the temporary facilities, we saw this in Paris with the BMX freestyle. You don't need to build anything permanent for that. You can build a temporary venue, great outcome, and then it can be packed down and reused somewhere else after the Games. But that leaves 16% of venues that actually needed to be built. And what was included in that 16%? No? A main stadium. A main stadium was always part of the agenda to be built, always, right from the beginning. And so there's a bit of rewriting of history that's going on here, where some people are sort of saying, oh, no, we never had to build a stadium. Rubbish. It was always part of the arrangement. Now, as I said, it's been completely botched by the former Labour government, and I welcome the new government, David Christopherley government's efforts to get it back on track. But we need to make sure that this is done with independence and rigor, and we need to make sure that all options are on the table. Now, I understand that there are views around the state when it comes to the cost of major venues like stadiums. And, you know, people will ask, well, okay, if it costs this amount, what else could that money be used for? Right? And so I understand that's a debate that is had, and I know that there are also people around the state who get very resentful of any dollar that's invested in Brisbane, even though it is the state capital, and we are a capital for all of Brisbane. And even though they're quite happy to come and attend Games here in the GABA or Suncorp Stadium from all around Queensland, but, you know, we understand the political reality of that debate. But one thing is clear, there was always going to be a need for a major investment in stadium infrastructure, always. So whether you call it a new stadium, whether you call it a replacement stadium, whether you call it stadium investment, it doesn't really matter. There always was to be investment or major stadium investment, right from day one. Nothing's changed. The only thing that's changed is the way that the government politicised it and botched it. And so we're determined to get it back on track. And the way we get it back on track is by having the options on the table thoroughly assessed by the experts, by this independent delivery authority, and then we can get the best legacy outcome. What does the best legacy outcome look like? We need an oval stadium, and we need a rectangular stadium in Brisbane. We've got one now of each. Now, Suncorp Stadium is a great stadium. It's not at the end of its life. The GABA, there's reports floating around that say that it will reach the end of its life by 2030. And so I guess the question is, do we just get rid of an oval stadium and not have another one? Or is investment required in an oval stadium? And I think everyone would agree that yes, investment is required. And so let's find out the best way to do that. Let's find out the best location to do that. Let's get the experts' advice and look at the costs and benefits, and then let's get on with it. Because in the end, that legacy stadium is required, not for the Olympics. It's not required for the Olympics. It's required for our ongoing needs for AFL, cricket, and concerts, and other major events. And for people in regional Queensland who might be thinking, why should a stadium be built in Brisbane? Well, I would simply say this. Would you prefer to fly from Rockhampton to Melbourne and have your money go to Victoria, or for your money to stay in Queensland? Because the reality is, we are the state's capital, and I'd prefer, and I'm sure they'd prefer, to be coming to their state capital and spending their money and their state capital to keep the benefits locally in Queensland. Because that's the reality, whether it's a Taylor Swift concert, whether it's a Lions match, whether it's the cricket, the heat, state of origin. No, there's no state of origin in an oval stadium. But I'll reject that interjection. Whether it's other major sporting events, we'd prefer people's dollars from Queensland to stay in Queensland. And we'd prefer people not to have to travel interstate to see all these great events. And if we don't have a legacy oval stadium, that's what people will be faced with. They'll be faced with that decision of going interstate to see the cricket, to see the AFL. the cricket, to see the AFL, to see concerts, to see major events. And so let's get the best legacy outcome here. But also, when you're looking at stadia, let's have a look at how people get to and from the stadium. Because that question was never answered when it comes to CUSAC. Yeah, we were told, oh, the state government will talk to us about transport options. How many options have been submitted to us? Crickets. The former minister cancelled the meetings to talk about options for transport to CUSAC. And so it's quite clear there are no options for transport to CUSAC that work or are credible. Another reason why CUSAC is not a good option. But when it comes to other venues, whether it's the GABA, whether it is Victoria Park, whether it is Albion or Hamilton North Shore, transport needs to be taken very seriously in the analysis. Because you may invest a certain amount in a stadium, but if you then have to invest hundreds of millions or even billions of dollars more into transport infrastructure to make that stadium work, that has to be considered as well. And one great thing about Victoria Park is that it will have three metro stations nearby and a train station from Cross River Rail, already in place, already in place. The station is being finished off. The metro will be running there within months. And why are you looking at me that way, councillor Murphy? Why are you looking at me that way? The metro will be running there very soon. And those two options provide great transport access. The GABA, obviously, will have Cross River Rail. But remember, we had a discussion in this place not too long ago.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
It's been moved for extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Remember, we had a discussion in this place not too long ago about the ballooning cost of the underground metro station at the GABA. And so the original $450 million budget under the city deal was heading to $600 million plus. So take the GABA rebuild figure of 2.7, that's the published figure, I think it would be higher than that. Well, yeah, it more than that, more than that. So take the, take the 2.7 published figure and add at least $600 million onto that to build the GABA metro station. So where are we at now, councillor Murphy? More than $3 billion, yes. We're getting up to $4 billion. And so that's what we know. That's what we know right now. And so to make the GABA work, potentially, you're looking at the 2.7 plus another $600 million to build a metro station. It has to be considered, maybe there is another way. Maybe some experts will say, well, you don't need a metro station there. Rail can take the, you know, rail and the Kangaroo Point Bridge can take the load. This needs to be looked at. But, you know, as I've said before, the previous proposal for the GABA was costly and disruptive. But is there a better way? At least we need to ask the question so that we all know 100%, yes or no. Is it an option? And that analysis obviously hasn't been done properly. It needs to be done. It should be done. So what's my position on Olympic Stadium? We want the best legacy outcome for Brisbane. That's my position. Where will that be? Well, I have an idea on where it might land. It won't be a CUSAC, which Labor supports. It won't be a CUSAC. And by the way, you know, councillor Cassidy chub-thumping about, oh, come clean on what you stand for. I've never once heard him say where he thinks the Olympic Stadium should be. Never once. Never once. Maybe it's Sandgate. I don't know. Boondle Entertainment Center, maybe. And so.
Councillors.
Is that why my vote went up at the election in Sandgate?
All councillors, councillor Murphy, do not call out across the chamber. And councillor Cassidy, councillor Cassidy, the same. Do not call out across the chamber, councillors. If you wish to speak, wait till your turn after the Lord Mayor has finished. Lord Mayor.
Where were we? So we haven't heard Labor express a single opinion on where the Olympic main venue should go or the main stadium. They haven't said a single thing. But I think it's easier for them just to oppose, just like the Greens. Look, we, I think we can be really sure about the Greens' position. They don't support the GABA. They don't support Victoria Park. And they don't support the Olympics, full stop. So it's really clear, like, you know, it's very clear what they believe when it comes to the Olympics. They don't want the Olympics at all. And that's fine. They can have that opinion. And parties on the fringe tend to have that opinion. The far right, the far left, they're the ones that are against the Olympics. Reasonable people see the benefits for this, for our state and for our city, and also for legacy infrastructure. And so I state again, I want the best legacy outcome. And to get that, all options need to be considered. All options need to be on the table. The only exception to that rule is CUSAC, which anyone can see just won't work. And so all the other options need to be considered. Now, last night, our assets were lit up in orange for the 10th Color of the World Orange Day, which supports those living with complex regional pain syndrome and other chronic pain conditions. And they're supporting research and education and awareness campaigns. On Thursday, our assets will be lit up in blue for the opening of Bluey's World. Who's got their tickets? Steve, you do. We're all fans of Bluey and we're all fans of City Dogs as well. So Bluey's World is opening up within days. And to celebrate that, we've obviously launched two City Dogs on the Brisbane River. One, that's a blue one, obviously for Bluey, and an orange one for Bingo, not for Chili, Bingo. Chili's doing our voiceover on the metro. Actually, we need to get a voiceover in the City Dogs. Can we arrange that, councillor Murphy? So they were well received on the weekend. And it's a great reminder of what Bluey is doing for Brisbane on the world scale. Like, it's, it's the best export that we've had since Powderfinger. And I know that's arguable, but the, you know, the way that this show is being gobbled up around the world and loved by so many tens of millions of people. And they see those iconic Brisbane scenes. They see the tin and timber houses. They see Malkutha. They see the City Cats and the buses. They see South Bank. They see our wonderful parks. They see how well-maintained those parks are as well. I think we're going to do a special episode in Dundee Della to make sure that we can show that great part of the world, of Brisbane to the world.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
But here's an opportunity to table pictures of Dundee Della, the zoning and the condition of the park out there for the Lord Mayor. Maybe the Lord Mayor would like to look at those pictures. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Lord Mayor.
At least councillor Griffiths is in good spirits. So it's a wonderful thing for our city and something we should rightly celebrate and promote because it's all about raising that recognition of Brisbane. And, you know, the thing about Bluey as well is it celebrates the lifestyle of Brisbane. And it's a lifestyle that is foreign to many people around the world. And they're like, is there really a place like that? And there is. And Brisbane is it. On Friday, our assets will be lit up to support the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust Christmas Appeal. The Lady Mayor S and the trust do amazing work to support local charities on the front line. It is the city's charity that supports other charities. And whether it's organisations supporting people with disability, pathways out of homelessness, challenges with drug and alcohol addiction, trauma, abuse, neglect, domestic violence, the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust's Christmas Appeal raises important money at a time of year that's absolutely critical. I want to thank Nina for the incredible work that she's been doing and the directors and trustees, including councillor Adam Allen, who is one of the directors, all of the ambassadors. We just had our recent grant round for the ratepayer-funded grant round, where people give their $15 early payment discount to the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust. And thank you to the councillors that do that. For those that don't, I won't mention any names, but we appreciate your support. That goes a long way. And that, that latest round meant that 16 different charities benefited in just one grant round. So it was, it was a wonderful thing. On Saturday, our assets will be lit up in rainbow colours to celebrate the Melt Open River Pride Parade. And on Sunday, our assets will be lit up in red to commemorate the eve of Remembrance Day, when we pay our respects to the men and women who sacrificed so much in service of our country and also around the world for the end of the First World War. Speaking of cycling, we've had some great investments happening in cycling infrastructure in recent times. First of all, the second of our Victoria Park projects, not a stadium, but in fact, an urban punk track has been completed with the opening of the pump track last week. It's a 260 metre track featuring bumps and jumps and twists and turns. It's great for cyclists or BMX riders. It's great for scooter riding. It's even great for rollerblading if anyone still does that. And it's, it's a really great facility. There'll be a family fun day on the 10th of November to officially open the new pump track where the Olympic BMX gold medalist, Saya. Saya Sakikabara will perform a live demonstration and live music. Will be there as well. Family-friendly activities, food trucks and lots for residents to enjoy. Also today, I was out with councillor Atwood and also the new Minister for Sports and the Olympics, Tim Mander, at the Brisbane International Cycle Park at Murray. This is a great facility. It's been funded jointly by all three levels of government. And we'll be having the opening day on the 26th of November from 3pm onwards. And councillor Atwood has, as she always does, put on a good party. And so. I, last week when I came in, I tabled some documents with our controlled entities that had their financial statements tabled. I have another document to table this week, which is the financial statements for the Brisbane Sustainability Agency for the financial year ending 30th of June 2024. I want to thank the board of Brisbane Sustainability Agency, the directors, and also the staff member, the CEO and staff members of that agency, who are a small but mighty team that do amazing things, including delivering the Archerfield Wetlands District Park and all of the Oxley Creek projects that are underway. Open recently, great outcome. They've done a fantastic job. And obviously, they deliver some really important projects for us. Item A is the council and standing committee meeting dates and recess calendar for 2025. And so as we do each year, this sets the council meeting dates and standing committee for the next calendar year.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension.
Seconded.
Seconded.
It has been moved for an extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon for an extension. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
So the calendar is set out in attachment B. The most notable difference between this year and next year's calendar being the meetings from, being the meetings from 4th of February to the 25th of March, with the recess then commencing from the 26th of March up to the 12th of May, which we did not have this year due to the caretaker period, obviously. There was, there was a difference this year because of the election and the caretaker period. As you can see from the attachment of the calendar, we have a winter recess from 28th of June to the 5th of August, a spring recess from the 17th of September until the 4th of November, and a summer recess will commence on the 10th of December with council standing, with council and standing committee meetings resuming on the 3rd of February 2026. The calendar is ultimately the same as the current year. However, there's no caretaker period. Meetings, as I mentioned in those different sessions, we do have a particularly long session in there. That'll be fun to see. I think we'll need to make sure the air conditioning is very cool by the end of that session. But I'd, yeah, I propose this, this calendar to the chamber and would appreciate your debate on it.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much, Chair, for speaking on this item. And I'm glad the Lord Mayor was able to clear up his position. It's as clear as mud now when it comes to, comes to the Olympics. Might change tomorrow, yeah. Interesting for the Lord Mayor, he obviously, he's got a lot of strongly-held opinions about Victoria Park and Hamilton North Shore and Albion. They're all opinions that are being totally and utterly ignored by the Premier and Deputy Premier, clearly. And, yeah, no, no, certainly not. Can't, obviously thinks that, yeah, his opinions don't count for much when it comes to Olympics infrastructure. And this one item before us today is an important one to obviously set the, the meeting dates and times for our, our council meetings and committee meetings, where we can discuss things like, like the Olympics and like Olympic infrastructure. I did actually also like the one where the Lord Mayor said he was talking about Boondle or Sandgate for, for an Olympic, Olympic stadium. Yeah, the last time he was seen down those parts, he was parading a known criminal around as his representative, as his representative, old Brock Alexander. I wonder how he's going. I wonder if anyone in the, anyone in the LNP still keeps in touch with him. They were very keen on him as their, their candidate, that youth criminal, handpicked youth criminal candidate.
Councillor Cassidy, I ask you to come back to the report.
Oh, sure, sure. Thanks very much. Yeah, yeah. They don't like being reminded of that one, do they? When it comes to this, this item before us today, it is an important one, as I said, because meetings in here are an important function of what council is. It is, in fact, what makes up under the Act, under the City of Brisbane Act, and the regulation, what council is. It's all of us coming together and having discussions and strategic, making strategic decisions and, and those long-term visions are things like the LGIP and the LTIP. Oh, wait. Obviously not today, not today, because the LNP stuffed that up.
Again.
Again, remember all those letters? Yeah. Was that shouting, I heard? No? I was just going to note that one down too. So it was 357. Yep.
Again, remind all councillors to remain quiet while other councillors are on their feet. Councillor Cassidy.
Just got a nice diary here of all them. All councillors, yeah, yeah, even though it was, even though it was the Deputy Mayor shouting out, it's all councillors, of course. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Councillor Massey. I caution you, councillor Massey. Councillor.
Yeah, I thought those, I thought interjections in support were, were welcomed. We've just heard all the guffawing.
Councillor Cassidy.
From the LNP on that side.
It's not for debate. Proceed.
Of course, of course. So these council meetings and committee meetings are supposed to be where councillors come together and can thrash out the big issues there. And what we've seen over, over, you know, the last, the last 12 months particularly, last few months with the introduction of the new meetings, Local Law, governing council meetings and committee meetings. But, but over, over probably a couple of year period, the continued guillotining of debate, muzzling of debate, talking down of, of councillors, certain councillors by LNP councillors, meetings, ablest slurs, as we've heard today from the Deputy Mayor. Meetings are supposed to be respectful. There should be robust, and there should be robust political debate in this place. What we've seen in council meetings just recently, you'll all recall, you know, the previous chair of council told councillors to shut up. That wasn't very respectful, certainly wasn't very respectful when the Deputy Mayor used an ablest slur today, or when the Deputy Mayor called me a, quote, a groin rub. Not very respectful when LNP councillors called other councillors by derogatory terms, swearing derogatory terms. I won't repeat those, of course. And, and the extremely, extremely biased chairing of these meetings, where we have today had lots of councillors on this side of the chamber cautioned, warned, and then officially, officially reprimanded on this side of the chamber. And yet, when councillor Wines was shouting out at 2:56pm, or when councillor Murphy and councillor Adams were shouting out at 2:58pm.
Councillor Cassidy, draw you back to the report. It is about the schedule. It's not about how meetings are run. Please come back to item A.
Oh, about council meetings. Yeah, yeah. So, so, and, and for sure, with section 4.1, 56b of the meetings, Local Law, we're setting these meetings. And what these meetings are for is for debating important citywide issues, having robust political. And what these meetings are for is for debating important citywide issues, having robust political debate, as I said. And apparently, apparently, Chair, you don't like councillors shouting out from one side of the chamber to the other. And granted, granted, there were interjections from this side, I accept that. There were plenty of interjections from that side, but your bias is shining through more and more each and every week. And it's really quite disturbing. It's really quite disturbing when we are in here to discuss these important issues. We have the Lord Mayor and his civic cabinet royally stuff up, meaning items can't be brought to council for debate that are extremely important about long-term infrastructure delivery in our city. And we have LNP councillors turning their nose up at meetings, at the meetings, local law governing our council meetings and committee meetings, and you especially, Chair, doing that meeting after meeting. Now, committee meetings, committee meetings should be longer, they should be on a different day to council meetings. As we discussed when the meetings, local law was changed recently, if we want to talk about really family-friendly hours in this place and then ability for councillors to raise more issues at a committee level and at a council level, we should be having a discussion and a debate about shifting committee meetings to another day, maybe Monday mornings, and then having council meetings start on Tuesday mornings. Some sensible, some sensible suggestions, I think, there. But of course, what this over here, which used to be known as an administration, has now become a regime, they do not like discussion, they do not like dissent, they do not like democracy in this place, they don't like councillors raising issues of importance to communities, they have all the telltale signs of a regime. And I know they don't like to hear that because they often say, and I heard the Lord Mayor say this recently, that they were democratically elected. Well, a lot of dictatorships start out that way. A lot of dictatorships start out that way. So there are some really concerning things. We think that we should have plenty of council meetings and plenty of committee meetings. In fact, more and longer would be better. But as a start, we'll support this item today.
Further speakers on item A. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, I rise to speak on item A. I would like to put on the record my increasing concern, which I do every time this calendar comes up, about the incredible shrinking Brisbane City Council meeting schedule. Now, when I started, we had about 32 weeks a year of sittings plus budget, plus we would have week-long sittings for big issues such as, yeah, claim seven or the city plan, there've been others. There've, the, the, the big, the big issues usually got their own dedicated meeting and time. Now, we are here, our primary responsibility is not, as the LNP think, to attend P and C meetings in the evening. Our primary responsibility is to make decisions on behalf of the City of Brisbane. Now, in addition to shortening the number of council meetings, this LNP administration has also delegated away huge swathes of power to unelected council officers or to themselves to make decisions behind closed doors in E and C. This is an assault on democracy. This is the kind of behaviour that regimes engage in, and councillor Cassidy is correct about this. I mean, even Putin declares he's been democratically elected, but we know that regimes demonstrate control in the hands of one or a few select people and exclude others from decision-making. Now, that started with delegations. That's been happening for a very long time in my time here at council. It's increased with the changes to the meetings, local law that the LNP ran through just a few months ago by reducing the amount of time for debate for each councillor and certainly restricting the ability of councillors to debate freely and engage in a robust political contest of ideas. And I agree with councillor Cassidy, the LNP administration hate it. They hate it. You can tell they don't want to be here. I mean, the Lord Mayor's barely here at the best of times. I mean, he doesn't usually even usually get through his whole E and C report as it, as of today. You know, so they're, they're, they're switched off, they've delegated their powers away, and we're going to see on the other agenda items here today, the result that that's having on the City of Brisbane. The first thing it does is reduce scrutiny over the expenditure of a $3.8 billion council budget. The second thing it does is reduce scrutiny and transparency over decision-making. And the third thing it does is reduce transparency, reduce accountability, and enshrine stuff-ups by this LNP administration. And we know that because almost every single project, every single week this year and next year on this new calendar, will be about fixing the LNP's mistakes. There's two in E and C today. Firstly, the city plan amendments, which people have been waiting on for two years. That was a big stuff-up to start with, and now they can't even get councillors the correct documents, they refused a briefing. I knew something was wrong. I knew something was wrong. The CEO refused a briefing, councillor Adam told me, and I quote, "You have all the documents." Well, no, we did not. And this LNP administration just want to ram things through this because they have a majority. Well, guess what? That doesn't lead to good decision-making. Generally, good decision-making happens when there is a lot of input from different parties who can contribute to a good outcome. That's what this LNP administration have failed to acknowledge right from the beginning. Now, I finally want to note that I too, with councillor Cassidy, agree that the idea that there is somehow, we have to have committee meetings on the same day of council meetings is just wrong. Maybe Monday morning's not right, because remember they had their 30-minute E and C meetings on a Monday morning, but that allows for another 23 hours and 30 minutes in the day for committee meetings on the Monday. Even if we take out 12 hours so we can all sleep and travel and family time, that still allows 11 hours and 30 minutes on a Monday when we could have 30-minute committee meetings.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I'll rise to just make some brief comments on this. You know, core to our roles is this meeting. It is one of the few opportunities where there's actually some sort of transparency. And when I say transparency, I mean that sparingly. And I mean it sparingly because of course, so much of what is decided before we get here is actually in secret. But here, there is the opportunity, and it's a core part of our democracy, to debate and to share ideas on the various topics that we need to do as councillors in this place. And that is a part of what we should be doing. Shortening the meetings, shortening the number of times we meet, this is all a negative reflection on the key points of our democracy, which is the opportunity to debate and share ideas. And we see that not only is it happening within the framework of how we meet here, noting that all of E and C is kept in secret, and that we only receive these papers, what? Thursday night? Or after, this week it was later. This week it was later, or after. Noting that, that that framework already of how we receive the information that we are supposed to, in our roles and not only representing our communities, but also representing the city, are supposed to do, the framework itself, the delegation of the framework of the power that the LNP council has been delegating over the past years, but also noting that that right to a robust debate has been reduced. To put on top of that, these meetings are, and I need to get this on the record, undeniably biasly chaired. They are biasly chaired. It is obvious for anyone that watches, and I do wish that more residents of Brisbane watched the behaviour of the LNP council in this chamber, because these meetings are biased. What we see is the continuation of behaviour, not only in here, with the use of ablest language, with the use of insults, like calling another councillor a groin rub. That, I mean, that is unacceptable behaviour. I've, I've only been here a short time, and even I can say that had that happened in any other corporate workplace, there'd be a lot of pink slips. And that, I guess, is a really important point to talk about here when we talk about these meetings. This is all swept under the carpet, this is all swept past, there is no accountability, and the Liberal administration with their mega majority do what they want. And the only opportunities for these debates continue to be biasly run and the frameworks of them where transparency is able to be delivered are eroded. I think it's also interesting that we just swept past today one of, a huge faux pas. The LGIP, the amendment of, and the LTIP, which we have been waiting for, for over a year, supposed to be debated today with the papers not properly delivered to us in this chamber. That is a huge mistake. This is a huge error. And while I can see no one's listening to me, because it's like, what would be the point? But it's important to get these things on, because the way that we function as a city and the way we debate and be able to put on the record ideas, counter-argument is really important. There is no good idea that just comes with no criticism. There is no good idea that can come without multiple people coming together to come to solutions, and we see more and more and more now, that that is not the way that this Liberal council wants to work, that is not the way the Lord Mayor of the city, the cruel Lord Mayor of the city wants to work. And that is not the way that this council is currently working. And I would, I mean, I wish more residents watched, because the way that the language used in here and the way that opposition councils are being treated, you know, frankly, I think it's against the code.
Further speakers. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Could I ask that item B and C are taken seriatum for voting purposes? And could I please table the email from council indicating that they've been given a directive not to plant trees?
Lord Mayor.
Well, it's interesting, we just heard councillor Massey carry on about name-calling and how she didn't like name-calling and then she called me a name. Straight away. But thi, this is the councillor who sent out a ratepayer-funded newsletter, a hateful, hateful, divisive newsletter, anti-Semitic newsletter, a new, anti-Semitic and hateful newsletter.
Point of order. Calling something, there is no protection here to call that newsletter anti-Semitic. It's not. It's not.
Councillor...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston, did you have a point of order?
Point of order, Madam Chairman. It is, under the code of conduct, it is disrespectful for the Lord Mayor to claim councillor Massey's, and this is councillor Massey's personal newsletter, is anti-Semitic, that is calling councillor Massey anti-Semitic. And Madam Chairman, that is unsuitable meeting conduct, and I would ask you to deal with that behaviour in the chamber now.
I don't uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
Well, I think, I think it's very clear that so many people in the community are seeing the hatred and division being sowed by the Greens, and that's why the Greens tanked massively last weekend. That's why people deserted them in droves. It's why they lost their heartland seat of South Brisbane, because they are hateful, divisive, bigoted and anti-Semitic in their nature. Now, if you want any other evidence of how anti-Semitic and hateful they are...
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, the Lord Mayor is now calling members of the public, who may be part of a political party, hateful, anti-Semitic and other very offensive terms. It's really not appropriate when it's done to a councillor, but to, to be done to members of the public is absolutely unsuitable meeting conduct, and I would ask you to take action against the Lord Mayor for making those comments about members of the public.
I don't uphold your point of order, councillor Johnston. Lord Mayor.
If you want to know what's wrong with politics today, it's the Greens. They are responsible for the Americanisation of Australian politics, for the division of our community, for the rise, they're fanning the rise of antisemitism, hatred of the Jewish people. And if you need any further evidence, then you just have to look at this vile newsletter that was put out at ratepayer-funded expense by councillor Massey. And she's worried about a few names being called in council, yet she is fanning the flames of hatred in her community.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
Will the Lord Mayor take a question, since he's so willing to call me Greens voters and members of the public anti-Semitic?
Lord Mayor, no, councillor Massey, he won't.
No.
Lord Mayor. One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Massey, that doesn't give you the right to call out.
Okay, so councillor Massey has asked which bit of the newsletter is anti-Semitic. And so, let's start with the timeline, where there's a supposed timeline of events in the Middle East. And it talks about various things, starting back in 1516. Then it goes through to 1920, 1948, where it says the Nakba and the establishment of Israel on the land of Palestine. What Nakba was, was the day that Israel was established by a UN resolution. And it's also the day that all of the surrounding nations attacked Israel and tried to wipe it off the face of the earth. That is where the river-to-the-sea chant comes from, and that is what I've heard councillor Massey chanting in King George Square very loudly. That is anti-Semitic, that is racist. But let, let me, let me ask, is there something in this newsletter about the very worst catastrophe for the Jewish people in this history? Is there something about the Holocaust in this timeline? No, not even mentioned. Okay. Is there something about October 7, where more than 1,000 innocent Jewish people were slaughtered? Going to music concerts, young people just enjoying themselves in a free democratic country, and they were slaughtered, and the Greens ignored that. It didn't even happen. That is anti-Semitic, that is racist, that is divisive. And so, it is really quite disgraceful.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, again, the Lord Mayor is calling Greens, so people who vote Green or members of the public who support the Greens, he's now calling them racist. Racist. Now, Madam Chairman, that is disrespectful and unsuitable meeting behaviour, and the Lord Mayor should change his language, because there is a, it's not appropriate to lump everybody in the same basket, which he is doing. It is inappropriate and you should address it.
Councillor Johnston, I don't uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
...in the Greens Party. She also happened to be Jewish. And it was very clear that she no longer felt welcome in the party that she had supported and volunteered for and voted for for many years. And what did she call the Greens? Rabid and divisive. She actually said that she went to Trina Massey and she was ignored. She said she went to Jonathan Sri Ranganathan and she was ignored. She said she went to Max Chen Lamayther and she was ignored. She claimed herself to be a progressive voter. And at the weekend of the state election, she voted LNP for the very first time. she voted LNP for the very first time. Yet, the Greens still believe that somehow this is not a problem, and somehow they're not doing anything wrong. It seems to me that they want to support the rights of everyone else, except for Jewish people. It is unbelievable, it is unbelievable. That level of discrimination is unbelievable, and they're obviously blind to their own discrimination. They can't see it, but everyone else can see it.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. We'll now move item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to, motion is carried. We'll now move to item B and C together, but we'll take them separately for voting. Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item B is the amendment to the SCP for the Brisbane International Cycle Park. I mentioned this park today, and we're out there today looking at the nearly finished product, which is a great project. As I said, this is a project that was jointly funded between three levels of government. It's also a project that's been under construction at a time of massive cost escalations in building materials and labour. And so, the cost of construction materials has risen by an average of 12% in the last 12 months while this project's been under construction. It started early last year. Some expenses have risen even further. Concrete has increased by 30%, structural steel 43%, and bitumen 29%. And there's a lot of bitumen, there's a lot of steel, there's a lot of concrete being used in this project. Having said that, despite these massive cost pressures, which are national and international factors, this project has come within 2% of its approved budget. And so, it is less than 2% over-budget, and because it is slightly over-budget, we're bringing through this amendment. But, the reality is in a period of significant cost escalations, for a project of this scale, this importance, to be within, within 2% of its original planned budget under these circumstances, I think that's credit to councillor Davis, it's credit to the project team, and it's credit to the contractor as well, who's delivered a great outcome under significant pressure. And so, today, we're proposing a, an amendment to the SCP to allow the project budget to be raised slightly by less than 2% to cover this cost increase. And obviously, the, the work, the final works continue. We'll see the opening on the 22nd of November from 3pm onwards, and we invite everyone to come and be involved with this project and celebrate. While this is a training facility for all types of people, including elite athletes, elite cyclists, it is open to the general public as well, and so, anyone can come down, if it's not being used for a, for a major event, anyone can come down with their bike or their scooter and use this track. So it is a public access facility, but also a training facility for future Olympians and Paralympians. It's also being managed by the Belmoral Cycle Club, who have been on the site in its previous iteration for many, many years and do a fantastic job, and they've got a great skills development programme, or development programme for upcoming cyclists, the Olympians and Paralympians of the future. But also, there's a partnership in place with Traction, and some of you would be aware of Traction, a great charity that works with young people and gives them a range of skills, including assembling bikes, and they do a fantastic job, so they're partnering with Traction as well. So, yeah, I'm proposing this amendment to the SCP. Item C is a good news story. This is the transfer of number two Ballantyne Street, Cherm Side, to the Brisbane Housing Company. Brisbane Housing Company is a company that's jointly owned by Brisbane City Council and the state government. It provides social and affordable housing. They have already provided more than 2,000 homes to people across the city. They've even done projects in other parts of Queensland as well, and they're always looking for more opportunities to provide more homes. And so, when we identified this site as being surplus to our needs, we looked at my, what might be potential uses for it, and we approached BHC and asked them whether they would have a use for this, and they were very excited about the opportunity to take this house and use it for their purposes. The transfer across to BHC obviously is foregoing a potential revenue source for council at a time when obviously our budget is under pressure, but we believe this particular site will be really appropriate and suitable for BHC purposes, and we look forward to transferring this across with the support of councillors, obviously, so that BHC can use it for their purposes and to provide housing for people in need, and so, I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on both of these items. The amendment to the Significant Contracting Plan and the disposal of surplus land. Now, clause B, this amendment to the contracting plan, if you listen to the Lord Mayor at his press conference earlier today, and, and his comments he's just made here now, he would have you believe that the blowout on this project was very small. He would have you believe that it was in the maybe hundreds of thousands instead of millions, but it's not. And there's an important, there's an important fact, I think, that we need to talk about here, to bring some real transparency on to this blowout on this project. You know, as I said last week and the week before and last month, every single time a project is entered into under this LNP regime, we can guarantee there's going to be a delay, and you can guarantee there's going to be a cost blowout. And there's, there's a common thread that, that runs through all of these projects that are subject to cost blowouts and delays, and that is the LNP's obsession with contracting out. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, City Projects Office has, has the staff to be able to construct this entire cycling project, the entire international cycleway, but when council doesn't have the capability and the capacity internally to properly scope these projects before they, before tenders are entered into, we have these blowouts and these delays. We saw it in Kingston Smith Drive, $100 million blowout and a year delay. We saw it on Metro Works where, you know, Adelaide Street was caving in every night because early works weren't done and council didn't know before they issued those contracts what was under there. We've seen it with Moghl Road, those massive delays, the project has doubled in price over its short timeframe because council doesn't have the capability to properly plan these projects. And we are seeing that again with this project before us today. Now, I understand why the Lord Mayor wants to try and make it an entirely good news story, because there's not much else going on in terms of good news for him at the moment. He's being slapped down every time he pops his head up by the new LNP government when it comes to Olympic stadiums. Absolutely bottom of the food chain when it comes to that. So, it's sort of an Olympic-related one, so he tried to make this a good news story today. But how, how on earth could they not know this was a dump site? I thought everybody knew that. Everybody knew that it was a former dump site. So all of a sudden, the papers before us today say, unfortunately, the contractors had a, had a blowout and had an issue because they were unaware and council never told them that it was a former dump site, and there were unanticipated issues with a closed landfill site. Well, duh. There are a lot of issues with those, we discussed them many, many, many times in my time in this place. But the lack of that early planning and that work within council has a direct flow-on effect. So if we had that capability to, to do the early works on these projects, we wouldn't see that. So the Lord Mayor has stated today and here that it was a 2% increase cost escalation. Now, just on that, the documents we have before us today, I won't hold them up too clearly for the cameras, but they're commercial and confidence, so we've been told we're not allowed to release the figure. So I won't talk about the figure that's in that document, but what I will talk about is what the Lord Mayor has publicly stated today. A 2% increase on $35 million, he stated, for this project. Now, if you look at what's in the papers, doesn't reference a figure of $35 million. And so if you do the sum, you do the sum on the 2% of $35 million, it comes up with a figure that's pretty close to what's in his commercial and confidence figures. Sure, people can do math, it's pretty simple to find what 2% of $35 million is, but the, the project cost figures weren't $35 million. So I, I have a question for the Lord Mayor, I'm sure he can answer in summing up. What was the contingency on this project? And how much of the contingency was used before we get to the point where the Significant Contracting Plan had to be, had to be increased? My, I, I suspect it's 100%, which was the issue that, that we had at Kingston Smith Drive as well. We'll recall, the Lord Mayor wouldn't reveal, the Lord Mayor at the time, and councillor Srirno wouldn't reveal what the contingency was, and said that really wasn't a blowout, except it is, except it is. We know on a lot of projects that we see that come through, whether they're SEF projects or massive projects like this one, or even bigger like Moghl Road, sometimes those contingencies are up to 30% of the total allocated figure of what is publicly released. So the figures that the Lord Mayor has released today show a blowout in the millions and millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars on this project. It's not just a couple of hundred grand, Lord Mayor. Why don't you come clean here in the chamber, and why don't you come clean with the people of Brisbane about the true nature of this blowout? On clause C, I'm sure he will. He'll come, he would, he would. He just talked about his commitment to transparency before in council. I'm sure he will, he wouldn't, he wouldn't not, surely, come clean on that. He wouldn't, he wouldn't have misspoken when he said he was dedicated to those things, openness and transparency, so I'm sure he will, he will tidy up his comments. He likes to do that, oh, he came in to tidy up, remember the, tidy up the stadium comments after last week, just before, so I'm sure he'll, I'm sure he'll clear that up for us today. But just a, a final thought on all of that, you know, they often howl us down when we say things like, people are paying more and getting less out in the suburbs of Brisbane. Well, I mean, case in point, case in point, the Lord Mayor has admitted that this is a massive blowout. He used it in the context of making $400 million worth of cuts to suburban projects and services out in the suburbs of Brisbane. We're seeing those projects cut now, we're seeing services, whether they are delivered through our libraries or out in the community, being cut left, right and centre now. Tree planting, as we find out today, being cut as well, grass cutting out in the suburbs being cut. We're seeing less spent on mosquito spraying, things like that. Yeah, of course, 20% cut to concrete for drainage and footpaths and curbing and channeling. And you wonder why, why are all these cuts happening? Because the, the administration says, no, all these projects are on track, there's no blowouts on these projects, are there? But, oh, when you just start to scratch away, and I do thank the Lord Mayor for releasing those figures today to the media, because when you start to scratch away and do a little bit of simple math, you start to, you start to build a very clear picture of the nature of the blowout of this project and the nature of the blowouts on all of those other pet projects of the Lord Mayor, which lead to these massive cuts out in the suburbs of Brisbane. So now, on to the disposals, disposal of this property at Cherm Side. We, we support this, and it makes sense to us to give this land to the Brisbane Housing Company during a housing crisis. We know BHC and other community housing providers are crying out for opportunities like this. This is what we have been calling for, for years, years in fact now, and, you know, I know it's baby steps for the LNP to be able to do this, but we do support this as it comes up, we should be seeing a lot more of these come through, particularly like last session when we had, I think it was nine properties come through for sale, some not appropriate for housing, but some definitely were. And I, I found it quite strange at the time when, you know, I spoke to community housing providers and Q Shelter, and they were unaware of the disposal of this land, but councillor Cunningham said that BHC were consulted and didn't want any of those properties. And then this, this item comes through today and says the BHC does want this property, so obviously they were consulted. So I understand now the process of which the LNP go through in the disposal of land, they only speak to BHC. Now, 100% support the work of BHC, 100% to support the transfer of this land to BHC, but in the instances where BHC turn it down, there should be engagement with other community housing providers to see if it fits their needs, rather than just selling it for profit on the open market, because that money isn't then returned to support for more homelessness services and housing supply in Brisbane. But the biggest barrier, one of the biggest barriers, probably the biggest barrier at the moment to community housing providers delivering more stock to the market, is access to land. These opportunities, you know, shouldn't just come in the form of one property every couple of years, should be a lot more work done on this. So, we certainly encourage LNP councillors to engage more broadly with the community housing sector, with, you know, Q Shelter is the peak body, all of those other providers as well, about the support beyond just infrastructure charge discounts that council can offer them. We understand and we accept that it is not the be-all and end-all to ending the housing crisis, to provide community housing providers with a couple of blocks of land. We get that, but when there are a couple of blocks of land available for community housing providers and they're not talked to, they're not offered that, that is disappointing and a huge missed opportunity when it comes to providing an outcome for the housing crisis. So we support this item today and want to see plenty more of that, and we'll continue to support it.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney, that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. Against, no. The ayes have it. Meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. Councillors, we now resume debating item B and C. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on items B and C. I'll start with item C. Look, I don't say this very often, but this is a good initiative. It is something that I've been suggesting, including as recently as last week, that we need to be working more cooperatively with the Brisbane Housing Corporation to provide surplus land for affordable and social housing. And this is what council should be doing, not the Lord Mayor's ridiculous posturing about, you know, some dongers out at Pinkenbar. This is how our council can realistically, helpfully and practically contribute to social and affordable housing solutions in partnership with the Brisbane Housing Corporation. So I hope this is a successful project. But I do want to speak a little bit further detail just about item B, the Murray, Brisbane International Cycle Park. Yet again, yet again, there is another stuff-up from this administration regarding a major project in Brisbane. It is, every week, we are seeing these blowouts, these cost blowouts, and the figures don't add up based on what the Lord Mayor's said. So I, I think there is a real problem with his transparency around this project to start with. But what actually is the problem? As we've heard today, the Lord Mayor has said they have overspent, so he hasn't come to council as he should have to seek permission to expand the project's budget. He's now come to council to retrospectively pay off the cost blowouts made by his own administration. And what is the problem? The scoping of the project. Very clearly, what it says in this paperwork is, council misunderstood and underestimated the contaminated land issue. Who did the geological testing? I'll bet you any money there is, it was council. I don't know why this council and its city projects, every project they touch goes bad, and it's pretty clear. And now, we've got something that should have been pretty simple, should have been pretty simple, is putting down some bitumen and some concrete for bikes to ride in circles. But no, that's not possible, and as a result of the incompetence of this LNP administration and councillor Wines and the Lord Mayor and the other E and C members who have been involved in this project, we are seeing more cost blowouts on major projects in Brisbane. Now, that's not good enough. We know that there's been a directive not to plant... We know that there's been a directive not to plant trees in the city. Is it because there's been a 2% cost blowout on $35 million? Yes, you would think that's the case.
One moment, councillor Johnston. Councillor Wines and Deputy Mayor, can you please take it outside for you? Thank you.
You would think, thank you, that you would think that that's the case, that the Lord Mayor now has to find funding for new project stuff-ups and we can't get a tree planted in Brisbane until autumn? It's just appalling. What's wrong with this administration that they cannot build a project to budget and time? Because it's not like this was five years ago. This project is a year and a half or a bit over a year and a half ago. It started November 2022. We knew costs were high, was a known issue. So how is it the contracts that council have entered into have not taken into account any changes in the contract? There was a contingency, clearly that's been spent too. So this is just another legacy project of this Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrinna, which is that there are cost blowouts that mean the residents of Brisbane can't get their parks mowed, can't get the dumping cleaned up, can't get a tree planted, can't get potholes fixed. A footpath fix now, permanent solutions is asphalt fillets. That is a permanent solution. That used to be a temporary solution at Brisbane City Council. When the Lord Mayor, his E and C and senior council officers fail to properly scope projects, fail to do the homework needed to support them and fail to engage the right contract for the job, this is what happens. It costs ratepayers in the suburbs. It's not good enough and the Lord Mayor's legacy to this city is cost blowouts and stuff-up on every project he touches.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item C of the E and C report, which relates to the surplus property disposal of two Ballantyne Street Cherm Side to the Brisbane Housing Company. Madam Chair, Brisbane Housing Company is a leading and trusted provider of affordable housing with a demonstrated ability to deliver an innovative provision of social and affordable housing. Brisbane Housing Company is a reputable organisation with a personalised approach to customer service. And during this year's council election, the Shrinna Council was proud to commit additional funding to support the Brisbane Housing Company. Since our successful reelection, the Lord Mayor and I, helped by our fantastic council officers, have been working with Brisbane Housing Company to identify how best we can support the important work their organisation does. Now, given the needs of people accessing social and affordable housing, this property was quickly identified as an option and the team at BHC were thrilled at the idea. On this partnership, the CEO of Brisbane Housing Company, Rebecca Olkers, said the following, and I quote, "In the midst of the most dire housing crisis, the leadership shown by BCC in gifting the Ballantyne Street land to BHC is outstanding. This property will catalyse the development of affordable rental homes for Brisbane families who are priced out and struggling in this market, providing them with a foundation from which they can build their lives. BCC is leading the way and putting their money where their mouth is, a true testament to council's genuine commitment to key work families doing it tough. BHC sincerely thanks BCC for their support and partnership." End of quote. Although housing availability is a state government responsibility, the Shrinna Council is always looking for more ways to make Brisbane safe and accessible for all residents. We want to support our most vulnerable residents and we believe the best way to do that is by helping them to get a roof over their heads. We're experiencing a nationwide housing shortage and creating more social and affordable housing has never been more important. The Shrinna Council is proud of partnerships such as this and our Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant Programme, which the Lord Mayor introduced in 2019. Our council has consistently punched above its weight and stepped up when the previous Labor state government failed to do. Helping to facilitate more social and affordable housing in Brisbane is no exception and we're proud to bring this item before the chamber today and I recommend it to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on item B, the SCP amendment for the Brisbane International Cycle Park. And Madam Chair, I had the great opportunity to visit the site with councillor Atwood just a couple of weeks ago and it's looking fantastic out there. And I know that there's a great deal of excitement and anticipation in the cycling community about the facility and that it will be open later this month for them to access and enjoy. Madam Chair, as the Lord Mayor outlined, this project has been subject to a number of increases in construction materials. But we've been very clear from the outset that this project was being constructed on a former landfill site and that we'd need to undertake remediation work to make it safe. During the planning and design phase, a range of geotechnical investigations were undertaken to inform the project's scope. But of course, there's always a risk that further issues will be identified during construction, including identifying a nest of beautiful rainbow bee eaters, which held things up for a bit, and of course, further contamination that was identified for remediation. As this chamber is well aware, we don't muck around with contamination. It is important that we make sure that any necessary remediation is undertaken. This contract variation was required to ensure those emergent issues could be addressed. It's disappointing that councillor Cassidy would come in here knowing he cannot speak to a commercial incompetence figure, so instead chooses to intimate, it is many orders of magnitude greater than it is. Either it's a deliberate attempt to muddy the waters or this man still does not know how to read a budget and he does not know how this council works. There was a significant volume of design, planning and project management work that was undertaken and has been done in-house by council officers and that's why the figures that he is quoting are quite different. Madam Chair, on the other hand, I'm very excited to report that the Brisbane International Cycle Park is now around 95% complete with the finishing touches now just being put on prior to the official opening on the 22nd of November. And what's happened is that we've transformed a 34 hectare sport and recreation destination that will host a number of things. There's a 1,484 metre road cycling course, an 1,170 metre international level criterium track and a 500 metre inline skating track and chair. I'm told that this is the first of its kind in Queensland and possibly even Australia. I've always said that the Games is about building the roads, infrastructure and community venues needed to cater for our growing population and enhance our incredible lifestyle. And this is a legacy project that will create more residents to see and do while providing training ground for our next generation of athletes. And this is happening in the suburbs. Not only is this a world-class cycling park, but it's also a leisure destination that everybody can enjoy. It's an absolutely wonderful outcome for residents of Brisbane. And as I said, I know councillor Atwood is very much look forward to hosting her local community in celebrating the opening of this fantastic facility on Friday, the 22nd of November. And I don't want residents to miss out. I really want them to come along on that evening to mark it in their calendars and enjoy what will be a fantastic evening for all and for the cycling community to be able to access. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Any further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, I just want to speak briefly on item C, the gifting of the land from Brisbane City Council to, it just went straight out of my Brisbane Housing Company, sorry. Thank you, thank you councillor Griffith. Listen, I remember when Brisbane Housing Company started, actually. I was working for a state member at the time and a number of properties were established or built by Brisbane Housing Company in the Anala suburb. And, and so I just thought it was a, it was, it was, it was, this company actually really not just supplied the bricks and mortar, right, for, for people that were looking for some social housing, because they didn't, either they didn't qualify for public housing or there just wasn't enough public housing available. So Brisbane Housing Company was able to fill that gap. But they also worked with their tenants to sustain the tenancy as well. And, and so this is, this is the model that I know the sorely administration, along with the state government, helped to establish. And it's worked very well and they've grown their, their base or the amount of properties they have by reinvesting and, and building more and more. But sadly, in my time as councillor, councillor Howard, in my time as councillor, I can't remember any financial support as far as money coming from a budget to Brisbane Housing Company to support the good work they do. Now, this, 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 this land here, of course, is a great thing for them and I'm sure they're very, very happy to, to receive it. And there may have been another parcel of land at some stage during, during my time as councillor, I can't remember. But certainly, I can't remember any money coming from a budget to go to Brisbane Housing Company since 2016 when I was elected. And I think it's really sad that really Brisbane City Council has just left Brisbane Housing Company to fend for themselves to a certain extent and they've done very well, don't get me wrong. Their asset base is quite large now and it's growing. But they could, can you, can you imagine where they would be at if we actually had financially supported them, say, over the last eight years, I've been councillor and before? What position they would be in now with, with affordable housing for, for rent? And I just think it's really sad that, that we haven't done anything more than this, right, over the last eight years, I've been councillor, and we should have done more. Thank you, thank you Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item C. Seconded. All those in favour of item C. Those against no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Deputy Mayor, councillor Adams, Economic Development, Nighttime Economy in the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy in the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of October, 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Adam and that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 29th of October, 2024 be adopted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so glad I can be back to my committee reports because I'm sure you're all missing desperately what's happening in the Brisbane hub. It is, it's been very busy as spring has sprung and people are coming out and enjoying the opportunity, obviously, to meet in the hub, do their networking or to hot desk, catch up and of course, very popular workshops continuing as well. So for the schedule of free events that are available in the next week, there is a very big one on the 7th of the 11th. Time flies, what's that, Friday morning? 9:30 till 11:30 AM, which is converting, oh, sorry, Thursday morning. Convert visitors to buyers, five crucial website components to increase sales. So this is being held by our business expert, Upward Consulting. It's about simplifying the process of creating a high converting website by focusing on five essential elements every website needs to increase sales. So it's really about practical strategies and actionable sites to transform your website into a powerful sales tool. So please, again, share with your business community. It is going out into our newsletter and networks, but I'm sure there's plenty out there that still are not aware that these are available in the business hub. Remembering that the business hub has moved down to our new digs now at Level 4, 260 Queen Street, so overlooking Post Office Square. We also got some great feedback recently from a mentor session. Boundless Collective is a bespoke outsourcing company focused on alleviating the current struggle Australian businesses face with staff cost shortages and turnover. And I think that's probably the number one that you're all hearing if you're out there speaking to your businesses. Staff shortages are a major issue. As we heard in the committee last week, our unemployment rate is down low. And so they needed some support, their business supports others, for a tailored approach to find offshore staff across any industry and any job role. So they were really seeking some information on how they could reach a wider market, understand scalability, industry context and general networking. And they got a mentor that helped them in a one-on-one session, a couple of sessions, that they said gave them lots of valuable information from a highly experienced mentor, which was absolutely invaluable. So that is the feedback we're getting back from those. Please let your communities, your business communities know, even your young people in schools that are keen to get into entrepreneurship or start up their own business, there is mentors there, hundreds of them willing to give their time, free of charge, to help businesses, small, medium, probably not large in this case, but small and medium, to scale up or financial literacy or whatever it is that they need to make sure that they can become more of a success. Last week's committee report, Madam Chair, was around our economic update as we start at every session. It was fantastic to see that our numbers are climbing and climbing. 14 million, 1.4 million domestic passengers to June 24. Our overnight visitors continue to rise towards pre-pandemic levels. Very interesting to see that the countries they're coming from are changing a little bit. We're still very much off the back of the lag of the Chinese opening up to Australia again, but New Zealand, United Kingdom are absolutely hitting it out of the park. And Germany's dropped off the popular list. So we still haven't found out why on that, but we're investigating that one as well. Domestic visitors are also spending more, 7.5 billion and 3.2 billion by international visitors over the last quarter as well. So that all bodes very, very well for our economy. Our inflation rate is the lowest at 0.1% of any of the capital cities and our unemployment rate is 3.9, which is also one of the lowest across the capital cities in Australia. Very interesting, one of the stats we looked at was the rate of commercial property and vacancies in the city and it is at its lowest level since January 2013. So, and the same in our fringe dwellings as well, around Kangaroo Point, South Brisbane and Milton. Our vacancies are very, very low. So not only are people coming back to the office, but people are wanting to set up office here in Brisbane and that is always a fantastic thing to see how economy is driving. And I look forward to everything else we're going to be able to leverage across the Olympics and all in the coming years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on the only item on the deputy mayor's portfolio. Can see she's been very busy. I would like to just acknowledge that based on the figures provided in the report, it's clear that overnight visitors to Brisbane are rising. 56% of all domestic visitors are coming from within Queensland, followed by New South Wales, Victoria, and international visitation numbers are up to 1.2 million and it's continuing to rise post the pandemic. So I understand the deputy mayor must struggle very hard with her portfolio when the Lord Mayor comes into this chamber and then talks down Brisbane's economic future. Earlier today, the Lord Mayor has said, if we don't have a legacy stadium, people will go interstate. Now, the figures that the Lord Mayor has put forward in her report today demonstrate that what the Lord Mayor is saying is simply false. People are coming to Brisbane in even greater numbers than before, based on council's own statistics. But the Lord Mayor's view is that the only way people are going to come to Brisbane is if there is a big shiny new stadium and it seems that his preferred location is Victoria Park. Now, he's been all over the shop on this, but it's very clear publicly he's backing Victoria Park. But I just want to know why the Lord Mayor is ignoring the statistics that councillor Adams is bringing forward to the E and C committee that clearly show visitations to Brisbane are growing. There's no big shiny new stadium in Brisbane. You know, the Gabba is still there and it's doing its Gabba thing, Suncorp is there and it's doing its Suncorp thing. But the Lord Mayor's comments today indicate that there is a pretty major rift between the deputy mayor and the Lord Mayor about Brisbane's economic future. If the Lord Mayor is backing economic growth solely on the basis of having, and I quote, "a legacy stadium", otherwise people will go interstate and he's not listening to the advice of the council officers about... the advice of the council officers about Brisbane's growth, economic forecasts, and the very clear statistics in paragraph three that clearly, quote, "Brisbane continues to rise towards pre-pandemic levels and is more than 7 million visitors as of June 2024." Now, you can't have both ways. Are the stats wrong? Sometimes councillor does get stuff wrong. But more likely in this case, these statistics that the deputy mayor has brought in here are based on figures collected by council. It's more likely that the Lord Mayor's pronunciation that if we don't have a legacy stadium, people will go interstate, is a political ploy to try and get a big shiny new stadium in Victoria Park. Now, that also brings the Lord Mayor into conflict with the premier, David Chrisafule, who said there will be no big shiny new stadium. So the deputy mayor doesn't appear, well, the deputy mayor's all over the shop. She hasn't told us her position on whether there should be a big shiny new stadium somewhere. We know she desperately tried to uncouple herself from the Gabba, but as did councillor Cunningham. But the big issue here is, why is the Lord Mayor saying that visitor growth to Brisbane is contingent upon a big new stadium, but the deputy mayor is saying, no, it's not, we're growing strongly, we've clearly got other good conferences, attractions, you know, tourist attractions and so forth, where the gateway to all of Queensland? So I just note that now the Lord Mayor seems to be out on his own. The brand-new state liberal, LMP, sorry, there's no such thing as liberals, the brand-new LMP state government says no new stadium. The Lord Mayor says there must be a legacy stadium, otherwise people will go interstate, and that's not backed up by the deputy mayor's own figures, which show that tourism in Queensland is growing. So I think the Lord Mayor is probably out on his own a little bit here and seems to be able to step with the advice from his own deputy mayor and the council officers. I mean, if this trajectory continues, visitor growth will continue in Brisbane. It doesn't look like a big shiny new stadium in one of the most important parks in Brisbane is necessary.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a very lovely rant from the councillor from Tennyson, which had nothing to do with my report, but she did actually read out the line correctly, but the analysis and the premise of her analysis is absolutely false and totally misunderstands the entire point. But I'm not surprised. She doesn't listen to me, never has listened to me, and I'll say it again. The focus of the economic drive and development, particularly through Beta but also our Economic Development Team, is to leverage the Olympics to get above and beyond what we've ever had in pre-pandemic levels. I've spoken here copious times about the visitor economy strategy. It was released in the end of 2019. It was a fantastic document. Unfortunately, visitor economy didn't exist in 2020. But the very important line there, which councillor Johnson read out for the room, was Brisbane continues to rise towards pre-pandemic levels. And that was the whole point, and that is why there's only eight of them over there, because the vision is nil. Am I happy with pre-pandemic levels of our visitors? Absolutely not. Pre-pandemic levels was not satisfactory then. We were working on how we would drive that visitation. And getting back to pre-pandemic is the benchmark at the moment, but that is not where we want to finish, and is not the vision that the Lord Mayor nor myself or anyone in our team has, which is why we're in government and why the people of Brisbane back us on our vision. Because the green and gold runway we have to 2032 can be so much more than the pre-pandemic levels and will be, because luckily they won't be in our way, and we can get on with delivering for the people of Brisbane.
We'll now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines. Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you. I move that the infrastructure committee meeting dated Tuesday, the...
Oh, is it?
Excuse me?
Yes, apologies.
Typically, transport is next, but I was called.
Councillor Wines, that's why I got you on the hop.
And when I'm called, I answer, Madam Chair, but it is...
Thank you, you can stand down. I'll actually call on councillor Murphy for the Transport Committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of October, 2024, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Parry that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 29th of October, 2024, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, our presentation in the Transport Committee was about the launch of Brisbane Metro on Route 169. As part of the Lord Mayor's plan to keep Brisbane moving, we launched Metro services early on the busy 169 route between Eight Mile Plains and UQ on the 21st of October. Route 169 is one of Brisbane's most popular bus routes. It connects with the UQ campus, which is the second biggest patronage generator in the city beside the CBD. By running our Metro buses on this route, we've been able to massively boost capacity on this service. And I was on board that very first Metro, Madam Chair, at 6:30 AM from Eight Mile Plains, and it was absolutely packed with transport enthusiasts. I think, I'm not sure, I think Thomas might have even been there actually, and I'm sure not sure about that, but it was a packed service, so very hard to tell. In total, we had almost 4,700 people use Metro on its first day of the 169, a 30% increase year-on-year for patronage on that service. And across the first week of Metro service, patronage was up by about 16% on the previous week. As I mentioned, the whole idea behind entering metros into service on the 169 was done to get services happening early for us to better understand the Metro bus product, to understand the impact to our operational services out at the depot, and to iron out any issues, errors, gremlins, and to finesse the customer experience ahead of the launch date for full services on M1 and M2. In the meantime, the last few weeks of running Metro on the 169 has given us very valuable data to help refine our operations and improve our customer experience. So all of those learnings are going into the run-up to services on M1 and M2. We're taking every single opportunity we can to improve Brisbane Metro, Chair. We, of course, are collecting feedback provided by passengers that are travelling on the 169. There are QR codes throughout the vehicle, both on stickers on the backs of seats, near windows, as well as on the onboard information displays. And Brisbane residents are loving it, Madam Chair. Customer feedback has been very positive overall, a very high customer satisfaction score, and we are taking away some very important learnings from Metro being on the 169, Chair. We are going to expand the information displayed on the information screens. We're working on making the onboard stop announcements louder. We are learning a lot about how passengers embark and disembark on the Metro, and we're looking to see how we can optimise these as part of our operations. I can also advise the chamber, Madam Chair, that we have sought yesterday, just yesterday, a meeting with the new Transport Minister, Minister Brent Mickleberg, and he has today agreed to meet with us tomorrow at 11:30 AM, which I believe sets a record for the quickest meeting that we've ever been able to get out of a Transport Minister in the history of Brisbane City Council, LMP, or Labor. So, pretty good, pretty good outcome, a great start for... I'm hearing lots of feedback from our Labor colleagues on the other side of the chamber. Well, we know what happened to your local member, councillor Griffiths, Minister Bailey. He did, oh, he did so well. He did so well. I'll take that interjection from councillor Griffiths. Minister Bailey did so well, he did so well in the portfolio, he got dumped by his own government, didn't he? Dumped by his own government, so look at him sing his praises, Madam Chair. Truly extraordinary.
Sorry, Steve. Okay, councillors, come back if you've finished, councillor. Oh, sorry, councillor Johnson, didn't hear, point of order.
I note, Madam Chairman, that councillors both behind me and on the other side were loudly shouting out, yet you did not name them.
Thank you, councillor.
You did not admonish them, you did not caution them, you did not note their behaviour as inappropriate conduct.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, I don't uphold your point of order.
So why, no, you haven't heard it yet, why, Madam Chairman, are you engaged in biased and unsuitable meeting conduct yourself by applying the rules in one way to me and in other way to other councillors?
Thank you, councillor Johnson, I don't uphold your point of order. And I was in the middle of actually speaking to the chamber and getting them to come. Councillor Johnston?
There's a crackle.
Councillor? And that word will not be used in this chamber, we've already established that. You used many today, and you know that that one's not acceptable. And as I was about to say to all councillors who are, I understand there is that good humour and light banter, but we need to come back to the report, please. Councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I can advise the chamber that we will be presenting a plan for the commencement of full Metro service to Minister Mickleberg tomorrow, and we're very hopeful that we'll be able to work with TransLink hand-in-hand over the coming weeks and months to implement that planning to get more people travelling on Brisbane Metro. I'm about to run out of time, but I will just say, 169, Madam Chair, it's been a tremendous success, a great outcome. This Lord Mayor, once again, keeping Brisbane moving. Thank you, Madam Chair. Leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. $45 a head. $45 a head. That is how much councillor Murphy and this council spent on throwing a lovely little party, which I know they are so addicted to doing, for the celebration of their Metro. And on-brand for everything the Metro has done, really, this was an exorbitant amount of money. We were told today that $137,000 was spent on a party for the Metro attended by 3,000 people. That works out at $45 a head.
How underwhelming.
Yeah, I take that interjection from councillor, because how absolutely underwhelming and so disappointing in a time where the rhetoric of this LNP council, time and time again, is we are scrimping and saving every single dollar, cutting basic services, cutting concrete, cutting grass-cutting services, cutting every single thing that matters.
Not the parties.
But not the parties. The LNP council are so addicted to these parties, how could they possibly justify spending $137,000 on a couple of hours for 3,000 people? That is an absolute slap in the face to the hard-working council officers who are doing the absolute best they can with minimal resources that keep getting stripped away every single day to celebrate a bus opening. And I note in, you know, there's been much discussion about Brisbane's new bus network and how the Metro integrates with that. And there was even discussion this morning in committee about certain suburbs in Brisbane. I know councillor Adam and's, you know, been trying very, very hard to advocate for some extra bus services for his community and was slapped down.
No.
His community has missed out.
Surely not.
Surely $137,000 could pay for a couple of extra bus services out to the deep western suburbs of Brisbane. This is just another example of the LNP's priorities that are just so, so wrong. First, we had the $90,000 Kangaroo, what was it? The Breakfast Creek Party for the Bridge Over a Creek, which is really a bikeway, which is, you know, $90,000 of ratepayers' money spent. And then today, $137,000 spent on a community open day for 3,000 people.
They should waterproof the buses, it said.
And yes, and while we are talking about the Metro, it was very interesting that despite, you know, lots of discussion in this committee over the last two weeks about the Metro and how wonderful it is, there wasn't really any mention about the metros and how they might work in the rain.
Oh, I don't know.
And there wasn't any mention by councillor Murphy about how, you know, drivers have been sending in videos how concerned they are when Metro buses haven't been working in the rain and how that might work. And I wonder who paid the price for that. I just wonder.
Further speakers? Councillor Wolf.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I also rise to speak of the Metro 169. So I was delighted to experience the launch of the Turn Up &amp; Go Brisbane Metro Service back in mid-October, travelling from Lake Station at the University of Queensland through to Eight Mile Plains. And as we travelled through the 10 stops, it was great to really experience the real-time travel information screens and to witness the flash charging that occurred in under six minutes when we returned to UQ Lake Station. It was great to see. And as one of the first-time Brisbane residents to really experience the Metro, I also was quite blown away at just how comfortable, quiet, and the accessibility of how the vehicle was. On the day, I had an opportunity to not only speak with many travellers, including students, but they commented on how positive the experience was and that the electric Metro vehicle were really a significant infrastructure upgrade, and I tend to agree. Following the Metro's official launch on Monday, the 21st of October, I have received to my office overwhelming positive support and feedback reflecting a strong community appreciation and heightened anticipation for the future network improvements that will enhance Brisbane connectivity with the Metro. This Brisbane Metro 169 initiative represents a forward-looking investment that strengthens both our community and our city's lifestyle, setting up a new standard for public transport here in Brisbane. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of councillor Ryan Murphy and all the council officers who have worked hard on this job, and the launch was fantastic. And I also agree, it's great to see that we are keeping Brisbane moving.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you. I rise to speak on item A. Eight years later, after it was first announced, eight years, as a light metro, a rail project by former Lord Mayor Graham Quirk, the LNP have not launched the Metro. So desperate are they to claim that the Metro has been delivered despite the cost blowouts, despite the timeframe blowouts, that they are claiming that the Metro has commenced with some Metro buses running on an existing bus route. Now, was this part of the Metro proposal? No, it was not. The Metro was sold as two routes. It was sold as a tunnel under South Brisbane to fix a bottleneck that's not happening, and then it changed, it's changed and changed and changed and changed over so many times. Now, that's not to say that you shouldn't be prepared to be flexible where it's possible within scope and budget, but the way in which this administration has got to where it is is by over-ordering the buses, so they've got spares. They're claiming that the Metro has started when all it is is a few extra Bendy buses running on the 169 route, which absolutely was not part of the Metro project. Now, how do I know this? Because I made submissions to council during the Metro consultation calling on a Metro connection between the South Side and the University of Queensland. Not councillor Wolf, she lived over at Hamilton or wherever it was at that point, she wouldn't know, wouldn't have even known where the South Side was at that point. And this administration most certainly weren't... And this administration most certainly weren't interested at that point in making sure metro services ran on the South Side of Brisbane. Now, they did not connect up the tunnels because the busway from Eight Mile Plains does not connect to the University of Queensland. Under the metro proposal, and this is the proposal put to the public, publicised by council, you had to go into the Marty Hill Station or the Wollongaba Station, change buses and then come back out to the University of Queensland. That is the proposal that this council funded, that is the proposal that this council put to the people of Brisbane. It's only in the last couple of months they've realised, oh-oh.
Sorry councillor Johnston, councillor Collier and councillor Cassidy, can you take the conversation outside please while councillor Johnston's on her feet?
They're certainly, I can't hear them and they're certainly not a problem. I understand that you want to interrupt me and it won't work. So, I, I think that this LNP administration is so desperate to claim their metro is a success, that they have dressed up the 169 bus by using the metro buses. This was never part of the metro. Now, I am happy for Southsiders going to the University of Queensland that they're getting a better bus service. It's called a route, that's the word, we're not American. So, I am happy that they are getting better bus services, that's for sure. But it was never, ever, ever part of the metro project. It was never envisaged and it was clearly, clearly a massive oversight that there was no South Side connection to the University of Queensland. Now, I just want to finish by saying, eight years later, almost $2 billion down the hole this council, one and a half or more, and we still don't know the final amount, one bus service has some metro buses running on it. Still hasn't started, it's over budget, behind schedule, as are most council projects. And yet this LNP administration goes and spends $137,000 on a party, plus all the advertising that they've been doing, and you know what? I know my residents are getting nothing out of the metro, and most people in Brisbane are about to get the biggest wake-up call ever, so keep going with your advertising. Residents of Brisbane are going to work out pretty quick that in the western suburbs and the southwestern suburbs and the northern suburbs and the eastern suburbs and the northwestern suburbs, that there is absolutely nothing after spending almost $2 billion to improve bus services in Brisbane, there is nothing for most residents, including mine in Tennyson Ward.
Further speakers, councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, sometimes the smallest reports get the spiciest debates in this chamber, and this is one of those cases. Just on councillor Johnston, well, you know, if councillor Johnston is right that we've spent $1.5 billion in eight years and we've wasted all this time, then she has nothing to worry about. Very soon, everybody will know, Brisbane Metro will start and everyone will be scratching their head and saying, oh, what was all this for? So, don't worry councillor Johnston, if, if the world will play out as you think it will play out, then you have nothing to worry about. Why, why tell everyone? Just wait and see. But I suspect that you are wrong on this, like you're wrong on nearly everything you say in this chamber, and that Brisbane residents actually can't wait for Brisbane Metro to start because they understand that bus rapid transit is the future of our city, a city blessed with busways but struggling with population growth, struggling with the task that is ahead of us in 2032 to deliver the amount of public transport that we need to host the Games in 2032, the world's biggest event. I am very confident, in fact, I'm supremely confident, that the only way that we can deliver the transport that we need for the Games is through bus rapid transit, is through Brisbane Metro. It's the only thing that we can still deliver in the time that we have left. And the hard work now is done. What is left is to commission this project, to commission this project and then to extend it. That has always been what the Lord Mayor has been talking about since day one, the flexibility of this option, that we can roll it out sooner now that we have one and two very shortly will be operating. Just on councillor Collier's points as well, madam chair, she criticised the opening of the Brisbane Metro depot. She said, she said the, the opening of the depot was a slap in the face to the officers that have worked so hard on this project. It's a weird thing to say. Well, she's interjecting, madam chair, but I think the hindsight will show, she said it was a slap in the face to the officers.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order councillor Collier.
Claim misrepresentation.
I note your point of misrepresentation.
Okay, I know what she said, madam chair, we can go back and check, we can go back and check the minutes.
Councillor Collier, wait for your point of misrepresentation, please.
We can go back and check the minutes, but what I heard was that the cost of the event was a slap in the face to the officers. Well, do you know who were some of the most frequented people at the Metro depot opening day? Bus drivers, engineers, council officers, council planners, contractors who worked on the project. They, for the first time, got the opportunity to show their families what they do for work. Because they can't just walk them into any bus depot around the city and say, hey, it's daddy-daughter day, come and have a look at the buses. No, they can't do that. They're operational depots, but they were able to do that at the Brisbane Metro depot at Roche Town, and you know what? They had an amazing time. I got so much internal feedback about how great that day was for us. And, you know, I take the criticism, councillor Collier said, we only had 3,000 people attend. Well, you know what else, what other event had 3,000 people attended? The opening of the Bruce Highway extension, the Keroy to Curragh extension. And do you know what the late, great Transport Minister Bart Melish spent on that party? Do you know, do you know, do you know, you criticised, you criticised me, we spent $45 per person, what did they spend, do you think, on that? $103, $103 per person, three times. And they're laughing, they're laughing, they're laughing. And you know, they should count the per person cost, because I know probably councillor Collier gets quite a few people to her parties that she throws, her party political parties that she throws in her ward all the time, so she probably does count the cost per person to host a party. I do, to be fair, I do love those parties, I'm not saying that I don't.
Councillors, again, thank you.
I'm not invited to the next one, apparently. But what I'll say, what I will say, madam chair, is that was money well spent, okay? Our operators had a great time, our families had a great time, and the public got to see and touch and feel Brisbane Metro ahead of the opening and the launch, and, you know, we wouldn't change that in a heartbeat. And you know what? Every time they talk about these opening parties, the budget for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge opening, it just goes up. So keep talking about it councillor Collier, because every time you talk about it, we're going to spend more money, we're going to invite more people, more people are going to enjoy the opening of these transformative projects for Brisbane.
Councillor Collier, your misrepresentation.
Yes, councillor Murphy said that I was talking about metro operators and drivers, etcetera, and I wasn't. I was speaking about hardworking council officers throughout council as a whole organisation who have faced significant budget cuts and impacts to their teams, to their projects, right across the board.
We'll now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, we will now move to the Infrastructure Committee.
All right, thank you, madam chair, I move the report. The Infrastructure Committee meeting dated the 29th of October 2024 be adopted.
And it's my pleasure to second it, madam chair.
Sorry, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 29th of October 2024 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, madam chair. The committee heard a presentation on congestion busting projects within the local traffic network improvement programme delivery area with inside the Transport Planning Operations Branch of council. The CBP or the congestion busting projects are about value for money projects that get large enhancements in traffic time, improvements of travel time, travel reliability and also pedestrian and motor safety for comparatively little cost. So these will often involve alterations to line markings, alterations to traffic light signalling, alterations to and extensions of turning lanes. So if there's existing concrete medians that can comfortably and quickly be removed and turned to turning lanes, we can take this particular delivery line and use it to make those sorts of projects occur quickly and, and within a very short period of time. The committee heard some examples of those, for example Sussex Street in Mitchelton, which saw an extension of a turning lane, it saw alterations to the traffic light signalling and it saw removal of some parking bays that have seen significant improvement of the operation of that particular intersection. We heard a number of other examples, oftentimes in Forest Lake Ward, if my memory serves, but also another excellent example was of course Ashgrove Avenue at Waterworks Road in Ashgrove, in the Gap Ward, in, which once again saw the extension of a turning lane and the removal of on-street parking to improve safety, visibility and operation of an intersection without significant capital investment, but merely changes to lines, the operations of the road to give significant operational uplift. And it has been a successful programme and I recommend it to all councillors. The committee also considered five petitions on a range of issues in all corners of the city, and I look forward to the contributions of the councillors who are reflected within those petitions.
Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks, madam chair. And I just move that item C and item F are taken seriously, item full voting. Okay, thank you. I just rise to speak about two of the, or one of these petitions in particular, which was item C. And it's requesting council reduce the speed limit and install pedestrian crossing facilities on Ekeben Road East at Taragindi. This has been supported by 50 local residents. Once again, I note for the chamber that this, this section of road is actually a border for my ward and councillor Krista Adams' ward. Last week councillor Adams was out of the chamber when we debated a tree issue, now councillor Adams is out of the chamber in relation to this issue, which concerns me and certainly concerns her residents who want her to take a position. In relation to this issue, but residents are asking for safer crossing points along Ekeben Road East, which I support. I think there should be more safety crossing points or refuges along that road, and I believe it's an opportune time to review the speed limit on that road, which is 60 kilometres. Taking that, and I'd need to get, work with officers, but my understanding is 50K would suit that road. But the most, for me, the most concerning part of this petition is a paragraph that says that we're going to now go back and review the 50K speed limit that council put on Ipswich Road. So council last year, remember there was a fair bit of debate, and then there was investigation and TMR and council were involved, that we found that the amount of pedestrians crossing Ipswich Road and the speed of traffic was that it made it safer for it to be a 50K zone. This petition now says we're going to refuse the 60K, refuse dropping the 60K, and we're going to go back and look at the speed limit on Ipswich Road. And my feeling is, the way it reads is not to put Ipswich Road down, it's to put Ipswich Road back to 60K. And I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't support that, and I doubt councillor Johnston will, would have a very similar position. Can I say, in relation to dropping the speed limit on Ipswich Road, it came after a comprehensive study that was done by TMR and that was done by council officers. And we're constantly told to accept the advice of council officers and to have a reason to vote against it. Well, it seems strange that now we're going back and checking the speed limit review we did for Ipswich Road based on another petition that's come up. So, to the LNP, I don't support what is contained in this, in this petition and the response that's been put here. I think it's setting residents up for another, another fail, and I, I think it's the wrong way to go. Thank you, madam chair.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, madam chair. I rise to speak on item C, the proposal for speed limit and pedestrian crossing facilities on Ekeben Road East in Taragindi and one side of the road's Annalee, I think, too. This used to be my border when I represented all of Annalee, so I know this area well. There's a very busy bus stop in this section of the road, and a lot of people have to cross the road. Yeah, childcare centre, school, big parks, Jess Andrews Parks at the end of the street. So my first observation is that we should be looking at lowering the speed limit not only on Ekeben Road East, but also Ekeben Road coming up the hill to Ipswich Road, which is also 60, and 50 would be a more suitable speed for there because there's only one crossing point there, which is down near the very busy roundabout outside the cafe. So firstly, I support the request for 50 kilometres per hour, and as always, I would love to see more zebra crossings or warmback crossings around Brisbane, and I'm very supportive of the residents' desire for safer crossing points. But as councillor Griffiths mentioned, I was extremely concerned by what was in paragraph 39 of this report. And I want to point out the following. Even though council says there are only 50 signatures on this report, of which 10 live on Ekeben Road, the others, it doesn't say where, it just says they live in the city of Brisbane. So on the basis of 10 residents of Ekeben Road saying to council, we want pedestrian facilities and slow the speed limit on Ekeben Road, council has instead, they said no to that, they said no to both of those things, and because 10 residents have asked for safety improvements on another street, council has said it's going to review the arrangements on Ipswich Road. Thousands of people petitioned to reduce the speed on Ipswich Road. It took a decade, it took a decade, it took multiple petitions, took multiple requests to councils, multiple speed limit reviews, and the speed limit has been reduced to 50 on Ipswich Road. Now, that wasn't what I asked for. We wanted 40 through Annalee Junction, which was the very, is the very busy pedestrian area, but the 50 has been a good outcome, given the huge numbers of people who have to cross Ipswich Road. The big issue here is residents' views are being ignored, not only in councillor Adams' ward, and councillor Adams missing in action here. Why is she hiding on a local issue that impacts on her residents, that her residents want? Councillor Adams is in here not supporting her own residents. It impacts on councillor Griffiths' residents and, as a direct result of the LNP interference in this issue, it's now going to have an impact on my residents in Ipswich, in Annalee because of council reviewing the speed limit on Ipswich Road when there's no reason to do so, none. The number of deaths on Ipswich Road, the number of accidents, it's a top five accident crash area in Brisbane, it is unacceptable that council is now talking about rolling back, rolling back the speed limit change on Ipswich Road because 10 residents of Ekeben Road asked for a speed limit reduction on their street and a pedestrian crossing. So this is clearly an LNP agenda, because it's not what the residents are asking for, it's the LNP's political agenda, and it's putting at risk the safety improvements that we've got on Ipswich Road. And I agree with councillor Griffiths, it's not like the speed's going to go down further because the fight we had to get it to 50 was extraordinary. And who's behind this? Who supports this? Councillor Krista Adams. But where is she? Does she have the courage of her convictions? Will she be held to account and vote in this place, participate in this debate, stand up for her residents? No. She says, yes, council doing nothing is the right response, council reviewing Ipswich Road is the right response, and she's failing residents in three wards, her own, Maruka and Tennyson. This is the deputy mayor of this city who isn't listening to residents and can't be bothered to turn up for the debate.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Wines.
Thanks.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just in response to some of the issues raised, so there was a petition calling for a speed reduction and installation of pedestrian facilities on Eckerburn Road East Taragindi. The road currently holds a 60 kilometre an hour limit classified as suburban road from Arnwood Place to Sexton Street and District Road from Sexton to Cracknell. There are two existing crossing facilities along Eckerburn Road East, as well as a signalised crossing at Sexton and a pedestrian refuge at Cracknell. Traffic surveys conducted in February 2024 recorded traffic volumes and speeds with unacceptable limits and a formal speed review was not supported as a result of that. Traffic surveys and crash data indicate reports commissioned by council found traffic volumes and speeds consistent with the function of the, of a road of the nature of a suburban connector. I would also like to make mention of, effectively the principal concern of both councillor Griffiths and councillor Johnston was the traffic, the speed and traffic on Eckerburn Road, which our professional officers are of the view that is increasing because of the lower speeds on Ipswich Road, which is one of the matters that was raised by, by the residents and by the councillors. As I was speaking, councillor Johnston indicated, interjected clearly, saying that clearly Eckerburn Road is carrying more traffic because of slower traffic on Ipswich Road, which calls into-
Point of order. Point of order, councillor-
Claim to be misrepresented.
I know your claim. Councillor Wines.
We will learn, we will soon learn what councillor Johnston meant by her interjections. But what it means is that because Ipswich Road is not operating to full capacity because of the direct and personal intervention by the former minister Mark Bailey, roads like Eckerburn Road are carrying more traffic than they should. Ipswich Road should carry the bulk of the traffic in the inner South community. It is designed to do that. If it does not carry the required number of vehicles in the correct manner, roads such as Eckerburn Road, I suspect roads like Annelie Road, roads like Fairfield Road will carry greater volumes because Ipswich Road is not bearing what it should do for, for communities such as Tennyson and such as Maruka. Now, I appreciate that there are concerns around pedestrian safety, but if you don't, if Ipswich Road does not address itself to the network properly, we have secondary concerns which will, which span far greater and affect more people in more communities. And I think because of, I hear councillor Griffiths talk about direct personal interventions. I made no such personal intervention, but minister Mark Bailey, when he was the transport minister, did make such a personal intervention to drop the speed limits, which is why we are seeing the negative effects elsewhere in that same geographic area. And I think it's important to reflect that when you change one thing in some place, traffic does not disappear, it finds a new way to go. And that is largely what is happening in that Annelie, Taragindi, Eckerburn community.
Can I just claim to be misrepresented so I can then, yeah, speak to that?
So that is what is happening. That has been identified by the petitioners. I feel that councillor Johnston's gratuitous attack on the petitioners in her speech was wildly unfair and that the, the public have a right to be heard and they are being heard.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I know your claim. Councillor Wines.
Councillor Johnston claimed that we should dismiss the concerns of the residents on Eckerburn Road for the concerns of the people on Ipswich Road. Was the claim that was made. I don't agree with her. I think Ipswich Road should carry-
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor-
Claim to be misrepresented.
I know your claim.
Madam Chairman, I mean, misuse of the claim to be misrepresented tool is clearly about to happen. Councillor Johnston absolutely attacked the residents of Eckerburn Road. She absolutely said their concerns should be dismissed and said that the operation of Ipswich Road was more important than their concerns. That was absolutely her point.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I claim to be misrepresented.
I know your claim. Councillor Wines.
And so we will wait and see if, once it's pointed out that she was attacking the residents of Eckerburn Road, councillor Johnston will, will now, after the event, withdraw it once it's been pointed out how harsh and unfair she was being to those petitioners. In response to, I suspect the Labour Party be voting no on item F, I just wanted to say very quickly, Woking Street, Mitchelton and Capera carries traffic calming, as is the road that feeds into that. Chessum Street, Mitchelton also has two traffic calming devices. Woking has three, Chessum has two. Wigan runs perpendicular from Chessum, parallel to Woking. It carries fewer than 400 vehicles a day and average speeds do not exceed 42 kilometres per hour. So at that point, with those two figures and knowing that the other two roads are calmed, Wigan does not require calming at this stage considering that it is not a feeder road, it carries relatively light traffic and the other roads around it have quite significant calming already.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Councillor Johnston, your four points of misrepresentation-
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In the first point, councillor Wines said that I had said that Eckerburn Road was carrying more traffic because of the changes on Ipswich Road. In fact, the, what I said was, I supported the residents' call for speed reductions and better pedestrian safety and expressed my concern about the intervention of LMP councillors regarding changing the speed limit on Ipswich Road. With respect to the second one, councillor Wines claimed that I had engaged in an attack on the petitioners. In fact, I have supported the petitioner's requests, I made that very clear.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor-
Can I just seek a ruling? When does clarification by misrepresentation become a whole speech of its own?
No, councillor Wines, no. I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Johnston, continue.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Wines clearly misunderstood what I said by saying that I had engaged on an attack in petitioners. I supported the petitioner's requests for a slower speed limit and pedestrian crossing. And I simply pointed out that there are only 10 residents who lived on this street. The third point was that I had dismissed the concerns of the residents who had petitioned, the 10 residents who lived on Eckerburn Road, and I was prioritising Ipswich Road. In fact, again, I have supported the petitioner's request here for a speed limit reduction, pedestrian crossing, and I expressed my concern about the LMP's intervention to reduce the speed limit on Ipswich Road. The fourth point of misrepresentation was to combine all of those issues together to verbally gaslight and misrepresent me when I have clearly been on the record supporting this petition response on behalf of the residents. And secondly, council's own response by the traffic engineers does not recommend a speed limit review.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify something councillor Wines said. I, I just want to make clear that I didn't infer, I think he said that I inferred that he had got directly involved in this process. I didn't. But I do want to put on records that LMP members have complained to me that they want the speed, the speed increased on Ipswich Road. So I have been contacted with LMP members who've demanded that.
We'll now put items A, B, D and E to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Cassidy. All those in favour to my right, those against to my left. Please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and eight against.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item F to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour, six against and two abstentions.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I moved that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of October, 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Wolf that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 29th of October, 2024, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before moving to the committee report, I did, I want to take the opportunity to provide councillor Strunk with some further information to alleviate some of the concerns he might have about the support that council is providing to the community housing provider sector and in particular to Brisbane Housing Corporation. And related to comments I made earlier about the land disposal at Cherm Side. Now, councillor Strunk would probably be aware that we have a 100% infrastructure charges discount in place for community housing providers and that is a permanent discount. Now, recently, we provided discounts on two BHC properties, two in Cherm Side and one in Stones Corner, a total of 208 units. And the infrastructure charge financial assistance from those three properties was just over $2 million. So very real financial assistance to community housing providers, in this case Brisbane Housing Corporation. Now, there is a fourth project that's currently under review for 54 units in Coopers Plains and the expected financial assistance in that case by the infrastructure charges discount is $625,000. So very, very real and tangible financial assistance to the BHC and the wider community housing provider sector. It's important to note that in the context of feasibilities and making these projects stack up for BHC, these types of discounts are particularly meaningful, but they really do help them get these projects out of the ground. We've had extremely good feedback from BHC about the nature of this assistance. So it is real, it's meaningful, councillor Strunk, and it is certainly over and above the disposal of that property at Cherm Side. I'd also like to add that community housing providers get an ongoing rates discount as well on top of the infrastructure charge discount. So just wanted to provide that additional information. Moving to the committee presentation, the presentation was on a development at One Bolger Street at Upper Mount Gravette and councillor Wong's ward. The approved development comprises six stories and offers a good mix of unit types, including 20 one-bedroom apartments, 18 two-batters, 14 three-batters and one four-bedroom apartment. One Bolger Street is a convenient five-minute walk to Garden City Shopping Centre with the local bus service stopping several metres up the street. Further-hike frequency public transport is available within walking distance. Commuting by car is convenient with close access to the Pacific Motorway, Logan Road and Kestles Road. Cyclists will also benefit from the location of One Bolger Street having multiple cycle routes nearby. Parking for vehicles is available with 87 resident spaces, 13 visitor spaces and one PWD space. Cyclists have access to 53 resident spaces and six available for visitors. One Bolger Street includes streetscape upgrades to all frontages and direct street access via Sarazin Street, activating the street edge. Containerized planting will be used to enhance the subtropical feel of the landscape. Additionally, the development includes external shading devices, awnings, colonnades and shade structures to all habitable room windows and to the rooftop garden. Units will have access to private balconies as well as a communal open space on the rooftop, including a gym and outdoor dining area. The development was approved by the Shrima Council for its alignment with housing needs in the area, contributing to a well-planned, sustainable community. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? No further speakers? We'll now put the report, oh, sorry, councillor Wong, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak briefly on item A of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee presentation on One Bolger Street development in Upper Mount Gravette. Madam Chair, in last week's committee presentation, we saw a development application that will provide a well-known outcome for the local area. The development approved will bring a much-needed housing supply and housing choices to those who wish to choose, live in the best part of our city. This development is within short walking distance to the Garden City Shopping Centre, which provides all necessities for local residents. Whether you wish to go grocery shopping, dining out for casual or special occasions or want to watch the latest blockbuster movies, everything is all within short working distance. But more importantly, it is the public transport interchange for the South Side. Whether you want to get, get on a bus to any destinations across South East Queensland or want to hop on the turn-up and go Brisbane Metro, it is just a few steps away. In addition, for a similar distance, they can get to the office of the local councillor for his services. The development also provides a good mix of housing choices ranging from one to four-bedroom apartments, which cater for different needs. Whether it's a growing family needing four bedrooms or single young professionals choosing to live near the transport node so they can catch public transport to and from work, it caters for all their needs. Madam Chair, I'd like to congratulate the development assessment team for their efforts and diligence in facilitating the, the development application that will provide quality housing choices to the people on the South Side, Magreka Ward in particular. And I commend the item to the chairman.
Further speakers? No further speakers? Councillor Allen. We'll now put that report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, 29th of October, 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Marks that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 29th of October, 2024, be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week's committee meeting presentation was on flood awareness and information. Being a river-based city built on a flood plain, we need to make sure that every measure is taken to ensure that our residents are equipped with the information and to know how to be prepared and resilient in the event of a flood. We are proud to have a longstanding history of providing the most up-to-date information. Following the 2011 floods, we made a commitment that all flood information would be made free and accessible. In 2014, we released the flood awareness maps to provide easily accessible and understandable flood information to the community. And Brisbane remains one of the, if not the best, councils in Australia when it comes to transparency and education about flood awareness. In November 2022, we launched Flood Information Online, a site that combines the flood awareness map function and the Floodwise Property Report feature to streamline council's flood preparation resources. The site has a mobile-friendly interface and users are able to- interface and users are able to search for a specific address, choose relevant mapping layers, download a floodwise property report and access educational materials. It was great to learn that in just twelve months from March twenty twenty-three, we recorded more than three point four million visits to the site, more than a hundred and eighty thousand floodwise property reports downloaded and approximately four hundred and ninety thousand individual users. It is a testament to how useful these resources are for our residents and great to know that so many residents are taking advantage of these tools so that they can be prepared for future flood events. I'd like to thank our very dedicated news officers for all their incredible work in this space. These are such vital resources for our community and they have a huge impact on making our city more flood resilient. Madam Chair, we also had a petition and three suburban enhancement fund applications presented to committee last week that were all unanimously supported. Madam Chair, I just wanted to respond to the question on notice from councillor Griffiths, which the Lord Mayor took on notice earlier today. As the Lord Mayor alluded to, the site at Durlandella does not operate as a park as it is partly a bushland area near Blunder Creek with the remainder near Blunder Road and the site of a future sport and recreation park. This land was identified in the L-Gip and will be the subject to future delivery of embellishments for sport and recreational purposes. It's not a park that has a playground or other similar embellishments at this time, given its future use for sport and recreation. So, but I would ask councillor Griffiths to ensure that he does report any instances of illegal dumping to the site, to council's contact centre if he comes across any in the future. During the C debate earlier on item B, councillor Johnson provided the chamber with her contribution, which had a number of inaccuracies and sadly some slights at our hard-working council officers. I can confirm that the geotechnical work for this project was contracted to GHD and Golda, so the technical reports were done by third parties. Madam Chair, it was a wonderful presentation by our council officers last week on flood preparedness, talking about the different tools that we have in order to prepare our residents and arm them with the best possible information to make sure that they are ready for any severe weather event in the future. And I leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Hello, Madam Chair. I rise to speak to the report that we have here, flood awareness information that we had presented last week. And I've been on the Environment Committee for a long, long time. And I've been really impressed with some of their work, but I've also been very disappointed with some of News's work as well. And certainly at the moment, I'm very disappointed with the way News performs. So this updated mapping, there's a lot of backslapping here about how great we are in terms of the flood awareness we've done across Brisbane, the important information we provide to residents. We don't write to them and tell them that they're now in a flood zone. And many residents don't know that their properties are in a flood zone until they get their insurance bill, when their insurance bill spikes massively because we've determined that they're in a flood zone. And often those residents have come to me and I'm assuming they go to LMP councils, but no LMP councillors speak up or would own that they're actually in administration and they'd blame that bad council. So that is a frequent thing for me that I represent my community on. And what we do know in this city, and if you look at the events in Spain over the last few nights, there's been, and what we're seeing in the northern hemisphere will hit us in the southern hemisphere come this summer, is the massive downpours of rain that are caused by the environment and the air being moist so that it can hold more water, hence the stronger storms that we are seeing. I suppose what was included in this presentation that wasn't mentioned by the chairperson was the lack of transparency in regards to flood mitigation work across the city. And I've raised this numerous times in this chamber. I've raised it with News, I've raised it in committee. As an area that... As a councillor here who represents one of the worst impacted parts of the city for flooding, both for residents and business, there is absolutely, and over twenty years of LMP rule, there has been no transparency in relation to how we deal with flood mitigation for our waterways and how we deal with the environmental impacts on our waterways. And I find that shocking that still after twenty years, the LMP are patting themselves on the back for putting a report up online, but they can't provide basic maintenance for our waterways. They can't provide basic flood mitigation for our waterways. And I get pulled up by the chairperson over there saying, oh, don't pick on the officers, it's not the officers' fault. But those same officers can deliver outcomes in creeks that run through my area but run through LMP areas and they can do it like that. They can provide flood mitigation and they can provide engineering and they can provide environmental outcomes and a wonderful picture for residents to see. But in my area, which is much more affected by flooding, those same officers can't do that. So I have real issues with the way... Real issues with the way this administration is performing in relation to flood management and flood mitigation and looking after people directly affected by flooding. And can I say, I meet with those residents often and regularly and I've never seen the Lord Mayor there and I've never seen the Environment Chairperson there and I've never seen our executives there. They're hiding up in the building in the CBD. They're not facing real residents and real people and real concerns. They're just hiding. And they continue to hide and they continue to close their ears and not listen and not deliver. And my job in here is to say what's happening out there on the ground. Because God knows, the LMP isn't listening, they aren't doing anything, they aren't getting outcomes. And I was fascinated to hear councillor Murphy earlier today say, hey, I've got a meeting with the state minister to sort out transport. And he's got it in two days. Can you talk to the councillor next to you and tell her how you did that? Because we need to sort out some state issues in relation to flooding in my ward and she isn't able to do it.
Councillor Griffiths, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly on item A. I too want to put on the record my concern about council's inaction, particularly on the south side of Brisbane when it comes to flooding. A council officer once told me, and this was very off the record, so I won't name who it is, that council won't invest in flood mitigation on the south side of Brisbane because it floods. They're prepared to do it on the north side because it doesn't flood everywhere. So this is the approach the LMP take. There is a massive under-investment in stormwater drainage, flood mitigation projects, creek restoration. I mean, the Oxley Creek project's probably spent half its budget and has the water improved in Oxley Creek? No. Is it still contaminated? Yes. Does it still flood? Have there been mitigation projects? No. So this LMP is failing, failing when it comes to Brisbane City Council and particularly on the south side of Brisbane. Now I note that Brisbane City Council refused to have anything to do with fixing Mullabin Creek, the headwaters of which run into Oxley Creek and contribute to flooding in my area. They said it's a state government project. But I note on the north side, at Kedram Brook and Moghl Creek, the LMP will invest hundreds of millions of dollars in restoration projects, clean-up projects, mitigation projects, animal habitation projects, in their own wards, in the LMP wards, but they will not do it on the south side. They will not do it. And it is appalling to me that we see this LMP administration continuing to ignore the concerns of residents. Now Jill Peters was in here just a few weeks ago from Oxley, talking about how Oxley residents want to see mitigation measures on Oxley Creek. She was ignored. She's pretty cranky because she knows that the information you gave her is wrong. She's been at this for quite some time. She's read all the technical reports. So she was quite appalled at the patronizing response that she got from the relevant chair. But it is just appalling that the LMP will not invest in flood mitigation. Backflow valves are recommended, aren't being done, they're not on the L-Gip. Drainage projects in my ward are being cut off the L-Gip. Drainage projects aren't being delivered. Creek restoration projects in my ward aren't being delivered. So there is a huge problem with the LMP investing in projects for themselves and not doing it for everybody in the city of Brisbane. And that is disappointing because those councillors were elected on the same basis as me that they had to represent the whole city fairly and it's clear they don't do that. Now I just want to talk very briefly about the flood mapping as well. Flood maps are good. Council's floodwise reports are excellent and they are an incredibly useful tool for people who need to know where it floods. I included in my welcome to the ward letter and have done for many years. The problem with them is they are grossly inadequate... Oh, sorry, grossly incorrect in places. Now I have a resident from Chelma who has contacted me. She's never flooded. Seventy-four, eleven and twenty-two, she's never flooded. But she's been mapped... No, no, she's been mapped on the flood map, albeit low, a one percent chance in one hundred years of her property flooding. As a result, her insurance has gone through the roof. Now she's never flooded, ever. And she's not likely to where she is, I know where she lives. And it is appalling that council isn't prepared to take a finer brush approach to flood mapping, to make sure we are not inadvertently capturing people who have never flooded. If you didn't flood in seventy-four, eleven or twenty-two, it's highly unlikely that you will. And this administration, by taking a blanket approach, has caused heartache and financial distress to residents. Out my way, residents are told it's twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand dollars to insure their house. A little three-bedroom house would be twelve thousand. It's just phenomenal. So I think council needs to take a more fine-grained approach to make sure we get this right. And the flood mapping reports, as I've suggested in my DeJersey submission, should be compulsory as part of REIQ searches so residents know when they buy their house.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? No further speakers. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would start by saying that councillor Griffiths comes into this chamber and has absolutely no credibility when it comes to truly supporting his local residents and providing them with up-to-date information on their flood risk.
You know, this is outrageous. I'd like to claim to be misrepresented.
Misrepresentation, thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we had a debate in this chamber. We had a debate about updating the city plan with flood studies so that there would be flood overlays so we could update both the flood information online and flood awareness map. Now this side of the chamber voted for those changes to be put in city plan. Councillor Griffiths and all of his team in the Labor Party abstained, abstained from it, which is tantamount to not supporting updating, updating important information so that their residents had access to up-to-date and current flood risk information. Now it wasn't just the Australian Labor Party. Councillor Johnston also abstained in that debate. So they come in here and have a crack at our offices, have a crack at what we do when we are doing the right thing.
Point of order, Madam Chairman. Point of order. One moment, please, councillor Davis. And councillor, one moment. Thank you. Councillor Johnston.
I claim to be misrepresented.
I want to claim to be misrepresented again too.
And please do not call out while councillor Davis is on her feet.
Madam Chair, it's in the minutes for all to see. I didn't make this up. It is there for all to see. So to come into this chamber and start criticizing the work that our officers are doing, criticizing the work that we are doing is totally inappropriate.
Sorry councillor Davis. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented by councillor Davis again.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also say that lately councillor Griffiths' behaviour in our committee meetings has been absolutely appalling and today was another example of that. Absolutely.
I just claimed to be misrepresented and if she wants to deal with the committee meeting, deal with it in the committee meeting.
Councillor Griffiths? I note your claim. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Griffiths spoke in his contribution about a matter that he felt that council officers were not being assistive with. And this is a matter regarding Stable Swamp Creek. Now councillor Griffiths had access to the Labor Party state government for ten years. Ten years. Ten years. So where's his... So councillor Griffiths...
No, councillor Griffiths. No, one moment, please councillor Davis. Councillor Griffiths, I caution you, do not call out. You can have your say in general business. No councillor, that's fine. But calling out and verbally another councillor while they're on their feet is not okay. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say that the general manager of the news branch has spoken on a number of occasions to councillor Griffiths regarding this matter. Brisbane City Council has money allocated in the budget to do some work, but it required money from the state government on the other side of the creek in order to get the best outcome that we could. But there was no money forthcoming from the Department of Education, none, because the bureaucrats in the Department of Education saw no benefit in doing it. Same bureaucrats that are there now, ten years later. So I doubt if the change will come regarding their investment in this particular project. Nine years, ten years councillor Griffiths could not get a meeting with his own colleagues and yet councillor Murphy can get one within two weeks. And yet councillor Griffiths is complaining that we should be getting it even faster. Like, the Transport Minister and the other... How long have they had their feet under the desk?
Two days.
Two days. Two days. So we should get a meeting locked in with... You couldn't do it in ten years councillor Griffiths. You couldn't do it in ten years.
Thank you councillor Davis, your time has expired. Councillor Griffiths? Councillor Griffiths? I... You are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, referring to councillor Davis by her first name, yelling out when I've asked you not to. And so in accordance with section twenty-one eight of the meeting's local law two thousand and one, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. Glad that you are taking your position seriously. Councillor Griffiths, your points of misrepresentation.
There's a few. One, I think the first one was that councillor Davis said, I haven't represented the community and that I'm not representative of the community. I have represented the community, I just got voted in again for the sixth time and I have consistently represented the community of Rockleigh in this space. There were so many mistruths spoken there and it's... I don't know where to start.
You had three misrepresentations, that's one.
The second one, yeah, the third one. Second one was in relation to meeting with state members. I have done that. And I've done that on a consistent basis and I have tried and I've put in written submissions as well, councillor Davis. So... So there's, yeah, which is more than councillor Davis has done. And the third thing, like, was in relation to trying to get action. I'm actually genuinely concerned about these residents. It's, this isn't a political game. I've been to their homes, I've visited them, I've met with them. You know, this is diabolical, the condition they're living in, and the threat they're, they're under from Stable Swamp Creek. And I just want to try and get resolved. That's what I've tried to do, and I'll keep trying to do it. Thank you.
Councillor Johnston, your two points of misrepresentation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On the first point, councillor Davis very dishonestly claims that I had, quote, had a crack at council officers when I spoke. This is demonstrably false. I spoke about the need for better flood mitigation. I spoke about the need for better flood mapping at a finer grain level, and I criticized the LNP. I did not have a crack at the offices. On the second point, councillor Davis again very dishonestly claims that I had been criticizing council offices. In no way did I criticize council offices. I advocated on the issues of flood mitigation and better flood mapping, and was critical of the LNP's focus on the north side, not the south side.
We'll now put that report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Hutton, City Standards Committee.
Thank you, Chair. I move the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 29th of October 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Adaman that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 29th of October 2024 be adopted. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. Before I start my report, I would just like to address one of the questions in question time earlier. So in question time today councillor Johnson made a series of claims regarding tree planting in our city and has subsequently tabled an email that she alleges confirms her theory. As we know councillor Johnson never lets the truth get in the way of a good story, and this is another example of just how far she will stretch the truth. Council regularly plants trees in batches. So we don't just plant one here and one there, we save up all the requests and, and plant them in batches. The plantings are planned methodically to ensure that new trees have the best chance of survival. This year council has planted over 1,100 new trees across our city, and the team are planning to plant an additional 12, 2,100 trees, sorry, in autumn, which is the perfect climatic conditions for our city. Now on to the committee presentation. So the members of our City Standards Committee last week were treated to a presentation on the Operations Coordination Team within Compliance and Regulatory Services. The team, the team triages compliance inquiries as they come through council via the contact centre. They are an essential part of prioritizing the resources that are on the ground. They process on average 70,000 requests a year, which can be anything from a reported dog attack, interference with protected vegetation, or someone parked in a clear way. This team does an incredible job of prioritizing car's response on the ground to ensure that all matters are responded to. Chair, a couple of weeks ago, I wanted to mention that our compliance leader, Kirsty Cronin, the manager for Compliance and Regulatory Services, was recognized for her 30 years of service in council. I wanted to congratulate her personally on her magnificent milestone and thank her for incredible service to our city. I leave further debate to the chamber.
Is there any further speakers? No further speakers. We'll now put that report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community and the Arts Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 29th of October 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee meeting dated Tuesday 29th of October 2024 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I move to my committee report, I just want to touch on something councillor Strunk said earlier in relation to Brisbane Housing Company. Councillor Strunk said he couldn't recall council providing any funding support since he was elected in 2016, and I'm happy to take this opportunity to enlighten him. Brisbane Housing Company was incorporated as an Australian public company limited by shares. The Queensland Government and Brisbane City Council are ordinary shareholders of the company, and a range of industry and commercial and not-for-profit organizations play a role as community shareholders in BHC. Since its creation in 2019, our Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme has consistently provided funding to the Brisbane Housing Company. In the last three years alone, this has totaled $157,000, and I can report to the chamber that there has been significant financial performance towards Brisbane Housing Company when it was set up. The program is designed to prevent people entering homelessness in the first place and to help them maintain, maintain tenancy. Brisbane Housing Company used their funding on a specialist mobile health provider to deliver bespoke, place-based health services to support residents and community housing with complex needs. Council has also provided Brisbane Housing Company with an additional $450,000 over the past three years to further their important work in addressing housing for diverse communities. So Madam Chair, I hope this update provides some clarity to councillor Strunk. And now moving to my report. Last week we had a report on our BNE Libraries app. It was an update. The app was launched in 30th, on the 30th of March 2020. It has consistently been growing. We had a fantastic opportunity to see how it, how it worked, and I know that our committee members were very keen to, to use the app and to make sure that our, our residents are all aware of this wonderful opportunity. And I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks councillor Allen and, Adam Allen and councillor Howard for that update on the support for the Brisbane Housing Company. But I was more talking about direct injection of cash during a budget, budget round. But thank you for that, that feedback. Talking about the app, I thought, well, I didn't know the actual app, and I was probably a bit embarrassed here. I didn't know the actual app existed because, well, for whatever reason. But it's quite, quite amazing little thing. But I was, I was interested to know, of course, what it costs to set up. Always interested in the finance of these things and how much it is to maintain. And, and that came via the Chair on a, on a follow-up question from a, from the presentation. So just for people that may be watching, it costs about $68,000 and some change to set up back in 2020. And, and the app, it's about a bit over $62,000 to maintain on a yearly basis, all right? What I was quite interested in was the, also was what, how the app actually operated and what sort of, what sort of take-up there was on, of the app as opposed to people just using their library cards. And the take-up was, was, I thought, probably pretty reasonable, about 25% at this stage, maybe a little bit more. And it is growing. But I think the self-service, when you go into, you get a line of a book in a library now. If, if you got the app, of course, you can just use your app, cut it at a shelf and check it out yourself, which I thought was pretty cool. And then I thought, well, what if that security guard, I don't know if there's security guards in every library, but we certainly have one in Anala just to make sure that you don't walk out with something you shouldn't be walking out with. But evidently, of course, it turns off the, the alarm system for anyone maybe exiting with a book that they haven't checked out properly. So I thought that was quite cool as well. And of course, the, the app, of course, does a number of other things as well. E-books as well, you can, you can check out e-books as well. But you, you basically, in some cases, I suppose if you check the e-books out, you really wouldn't actually have to go into the library. I suppose you could just do that by remote, which is, which is quite cool as well. Our library, I just wanted to say in general, our library, the library, at least in my area anyways, is ever-increasing in popularity. And I, I walked out my, the door from my office into a hallway, and the library's just on the right, and, and it's see-through glass all the way along the hallway. So you can actually see how many people are actually using the library at any given time. And I'm just, I'm always amazed how, how the community is really warm to this, this thing called a library that we thought, I thought, you know, a few years back, probably libraries would sort of cease to exist, you know, with all, with everything that can be looked up on the internet. But I was proven wrong, and they're just more and more popular every year. And, and I don't have a large library. I've, I've only got one that's about 750 square meters. So it's not one of the largest libraries, but it's certainly one of the most highly-used, I would, I would suggest, across Brisbane. But anyways, it was an interesting presentation, and I, I did learn something, which is always, always nice to do in a, in a presentation. Thank you very much.
Further speakers. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank councillor Strunk for his contribution. I would just like to point out to councillor Strunk that that was significant financial investment that we have made in, in Brisbane Housing Company, and we will continue to do so. So I'd just like him to read the minutes and understand that there's a lot of, a lot of support from this organization. Thank you.
We'll now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Huang, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday 29th of October 2024 be adopted.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Huang and seconded by councillor Dixon that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 29th of October 2024 be adopted. And, sorry councillor Huang, but it is now under the provision of section 35.13 of the Meeting's Local Law on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports. So I will now put that motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no.
Point of order, point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I don't know what you said then. You spoke so quickly. What, what were you saying?
The three hours has expired.
I'm, sorry?
Yeah.
But you told us just a few weeks ago we didn't have to do that anymore.
Councillor.
Is that not right? So we do have to do it.
Councillor Johnston, I don't uphold your point of order.
I'm just, I could not, you spoke so quickly.
I'll say it slowly. As Meeting's Local Law is, sorry, sorry. Under the provisions of section 35.13 of the Meeting's Local Law on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committing report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. We are currently in Finance and City Governance, so I'm now going to put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a petition concerning Old Cleveland and Jones Road, Corina.
Councillor Davis.
I have a petition requesting fencing along, wildlife fencing along Hamilton Road.
Any further petitions? Councillor Dixon may have a motion for receipt of the petitions.
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? Councillors, we will now move to general business. Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak very briefly about a very bizarre matter that happened to me just a couple of days ago. Just one day before the state election, I received a very random letter in my inbox, which was by Pauline Hanson and One Nation, and it was actually suing me for racial vilification. And I bring this as relevancy to the council today because they copied in Brisbane City Council saying that they're going to make a formal complaint if within 14 days I don't submit a half-page ad in the Korean Mail and also the Australian withdrawing my comments. My comments that I made over the state election was with regards to our seat, our state seat of Stretton, which I'd like to congratulate our local member, James Martin, who's worked very hard for his reelection this period, against an LNP candidate who was actually caught with secret, secret plans going against what Chris Bulley had been saying this whole time throughout the whole election. So we were very happy to see that result. But nonetheless, the email that we'd sent out was actually about the One Nation preferencing that the LNP candidate had done in the most multicultural electorate of the state, which was completely unacceptable. The email that I sent out was calling out One Nation and their racist behavior, and this is what we had referenced in this email out. But what these lawyers had actually stated in this letter was about racial vilification with reference to my racial comments. But basically what happened after that was we managed to find Casey. So there was a local barrister, Anthony Morris, who was, didn't really take a Casey really to read this letter and find though that it was quite an incompetent one. There were grammatical errors. They were also, they got my name wrong. They called me Emily Ward as well. They said that they would report me to the Human Rights Commission as well for this very, this very standard email that I see a lot of politicians writing and also using even in their own, in their own maiden speeches as well. And one thing that I really wanted to address was that I think in this day and age, it's quite shocking that as Brisbane city councillors, you can have another politician coming at you and attacking you, throwing money at the situation and trying to silence you for free speech. And I don't think that's democratic. I think that's wrong, and I think in today's day and age, it's completely unacceptable. I've been contacted from politicians from all sides, from residents from all sides of politics as well, saying this is completely unacceptable behavior. I think it also showed at the last state election as well. We saw that One Nation didn't pick up any seats at the last election. It shows that Queenslanders are getting sick of divisive politics. They're getting sick of too far right, too far left, just people using bigoted statements constantly. I think it's wrong. I think Pauline deserves to be called out. But there is one thing that I really wanted to let her know, which is that she's more than welcome to pop on down to Callum Bell. I'll shout her a bubble tea. We can go around all the local schools. She can meet all the multicultural students who are proudly singing the Australian anthem like I did, the national anthem growing up. We were so proud to be Australian, as I am as well. There are so many kids born and raised here. There are so many people who should be accepted in Australia, no matter what, no matter what their ethnicity or origin is, and I think we're all proud to be Australian. And I think if there's one thing that she's got wrong, it's that she could be more Australian than someone else. And I think that message really needs to resonate with her. If she's still angry, in the words of her own supporters, I think she should stop being a snowflake. So thank you, Chair, and I look forward to updating the Chair on further matters about how this case goes forwards. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Wolf.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. I'd just like to extend some thanks and dedication to the council offices and to my team in the Walter Taylor Ward office, and, and generally the community at large. Last week I was absent from chamber, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to extend the great work that we achieved during the chamber recess period. So I just wanted to share a couple of those exciting things. And I just wanted to begin with the great work of the works for the Walter Taylor Bridge that were complete. I really wanted to extend a heartfelt thanks to the 50 Brisbane City Council workers who worked tirelessly day and night to ensure that the Walter Taylor Bridge not only opened on time, but actually five days early. So I wanted to extend a sincere thanks to Stacey, Andrea, Louis, Charmaine, and all the, those who assisted with the Walter Taylor communications that went out, which I think they did a fantastic job. I had residents ringing and thanking me for the great work that was done with the repairs for the Walter Taylor Bridge, and actually said they wish it would close more often because they thought the streets were beautiful and quiet, and they actually enjoyed how well it was managed. So I just wanted to reiterate how well that was done. I also wanted to extend my excitement for the Indrapilly Library refurbishment that is happening in my ward. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for our community, and it's not just about a renovation. It's about a really strong collaboration between Brisbane City Council and Indrapilly Shopping Centre to deliver an outstanding facility. And, and in doing so, will be reducing the cost to ratepayers, which is a great outcome. And I'm confident the project will continue to be a central part for our community as we preserve our lifestyle in the western suburbs while reducing the burden on ratepayers by by keeping the library at the heart of Indrapilly Shopping Centre to at least 2035. So it's a really great outcome. Also, over the last few months, I've been delighted to see the progress of the Mogul Road corridor upgrade. I'm really pleased to share that over the recent break, we now have on-street parking on the Commercial Service Road. This has been reinstated and it's providing really valuable access once again to local businesses and visitors alike. Additionally, the traffic on Mogul Road has been realigned to its permanent configuration. And this is really adding to the enhancements and the appeal of the upgrade in general. And landscaping has begun and it's beginning to look vibrant and fresh and really coming all together. So again, really thankful to all the council officers who are working on the Mogul Road corridor upgrade. It won't be long and it will be back open. I also was delighted to host during recess break, two activations in my ward, one being a business activation, which was right near the Mogul Road upgrade. This was really well supported. We got great positive feedback from the businesses, the community really came together and it was just nice to see that shopping local was the focus for that event. And yeah, thank you to all those who attended in my community. And then just last weekend, we hosted a event in Guyatt Park called Guyatt Grooves. It was fantastic to have a 40-piece band playing as part of our bands programme for Brisbane City Council. It was beyond our expectation. We hosted it for grandparents' day, but we didn't just get grandparents and little ones along, we got all ages. It was fantastic and really well supported. I had residents saying that they were enjoying the music from their apartment buildings nearby that couldn't even fit in the park, it was so popular. So I just didn't want the opportunity to go to say how, how much I'm enjoying being the local councillor, loving living in the ward and enjoying everything about the western suburbs. Thank you.
Further speakers? Counselor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on green space, deep planting and development. It is possible we will see population increases of up to 400,000 people in the next 20 years for the Brisbane local government area, based on projections by the state government. This means that long-term planning for green space is crucial for our future, Brisbane to have any chance of being a sustainable, healthy, livable city. One change making, sorry, one change making its way through state government planning process is a City Plan Amendment Package, Major L. This package includes a proposal to change deep planting targets for multiple dwelling developments from 10% to 15%. This change was of course advocated by the Greens and we were pleased to see this initiative. However, we are seeing so many developments being approved with zero deep planting. And in the fastest-growing part of my ward, the high-density part of Milton, we are only seeing an average of 4% deep planting being approved. In this performance-based planning system, our targets are pointless if developers can find a way to trade them off without any oversight from local councillors. This LMP-controlled council likes to suggest the Greens are opposing all new developments. Of course, that is manipulation of what is really happening. We could call them alternative facts. What Greens councillors are really doing is advocating for more sustainable, greener and better development that is actually in line with our city plan targets, like the 10% deep planting. My question is, why are LMP councillors not representing their communities? Why are local LMP councillors not advocating for better development outcomes, for more green space, for more deep planting, for buildings that integrate more harmoniously into the existing neighbourhood? I have found that most residents, like the Greens, are not opposed to development, they just want better development outcomes than this council is delivering. We don't have to accept concrete jungles to increase housing, we don't have to reduce green space for population growth. This idea that allowing poorly-designed, unsustainable development that reduces green space and plantings is the only way to resolve the housing crisis is false. It's false, told to our residents, in order to give developers more profit, more power to build whatever they want, whatever they want. Of course, it's not a surprise that the new LMP state government has already committed to changing the law to allow developers to make political donations. While this LMP council gives developers discounts of up to 75% infrastructure charges, the LMP state government will change legislation to enable developers to hand some of that back to LMP in donations. Sounds like a slick deal, legalising corruption. With good planning, with good management, this city can provide sufficient housing for everyone, while also ensuring we have enough green space and vegetation.
One moment, please. Counselors, do not call out while another councillor is on their feet. Counselor Chongwa.
I completed my speech, thanks.
Any further speakers? Counselor, sorry, Counselor Massey.
I rise to speak on one item today, and that is the Lord Mayor's comments earlier today. Early today, the Lord Mayor made multiple statements that went beyond slander, that went beyond defamation, that went beyond the code of conduct. What the Lord Mayor has done today is undebiably showed his true face here, and it is truly cruel. In response to statements made about bullying and the lack of transparency, the Lord Mayor decided to call me, Greens MPs, Greens members, Greens voters and thousands and hundreds of people across Brisbane, who are in grief over the deaths of children, women, civilians in Gaza, the West Bank and now Lebanon, racist and anti-Semitic. And these words shouldn't be taken lightly because these words have a purpose. They have a purpose to silence, they have a purpose to attack. And what the Lord Mayor has indicated today is that those people that care, he doesn't care for. What it indicates is for Palestinians that have been in this country, like Khalil, who was in the story in the newsletter, Palestinians that have lost family and are also in grief, the people and the families living here from Lebanon that are also in grief of Israel's military aggression do not matter to the Lord Mayor and this LMP council. They do not matter, and we know they don't matter because, given an opportunity to even mention that too many lives have been lost in Gaza, in West Bank and now in Lebanon, not only civilian lives, journalists.
One moment, please, Counselor Chongwa. Counselor Adaman, do not call out. Counselor Chongwa.
Massey.
Counselor Massey, my apologies.
Civilian lives, journalists, doctors, providers of food to those areas. With an opportunity to speak about that, the Lord Mayor has never spoken about that. And what we saw today was the true face of the Lord Mayor, for the city to see and stand up against, for the city to know what line has been drawn, and it is every LMP councillor that stands behind him that is, that shares what should be that shame and guilt. To call so openly, to defame, to slander so openly, indicating exactly what he thinks of those people that escaped as refugees, as families that escaped as refugees, those who immigrated here, their voices mean nothing. And that if they say a voice, if they stand up and they say, we want a ceasefire, we want the deaths to end, then the Lord Mayor will happily call you an anti-Semite and a racist. That's what we saw today, and that is shameful. Absolutely shameful. What we've seen is a loss of life that's uncomparable in the most recent years, and it is happening. And criticism of the Israeli state, the state of Israel, is not anti-Semitism. Criticism of the continual deaths, criticism of the lack of ceasefire, criticism of aggression as people are in grief and mourning, not only in Brisbane, across the state and across Australia and globally around the world, is not racist and anti-Semitic. And these tactics of using it to silence any criticism is censorship. We will see in due time as the investigation continues, but beyond that, I want to make it clear that that was not on and I will be pursuing every effort to call the Lord Mayor account for his disgusting behaviour here in chambers.
Are there any further speakers? Counselors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item 8A on the agenda. Counselor Massey, would you please move the motion?
Thank you, Chair. I rise and that I call for this council to immediately reinstate the power in barbecues in Musgrave Park, Carilpa Point, to enable community use for residents, frontline support services, cleaners, event organisers and those experiencing homelessness.
Second that.
It has been moved by Counselor Massey and seconded by Counselor Chongwa that this council immediately reinstate the power in barbecues in Musgrave Park and Carilpa Point to enable community use for residents, frontline support services, cleaners, event organisations and those experiencing homelessness. Is there any debate? Counselor Massey.
Over two weeks ago, through you, Chair, the Lord Mayor, Adrian Strunna the Cruel, the first of his name, cut power and turned off barbecues at Musgrave Park and Carilpa Point. What were the results of this cruel and careless action? Firstly, this action contributed nothing to solving the worst housing crisis since the Great Depression. Today, in Queensland, one in 200 people in our state are currently unhoused, a statistic that should be unacceptable to anyone in this room. Of course, it is successful, successive Liberal, National and Labor Party governments at all levels, including this one, that have failed to ensure that anyone has access to safe, secure and affordable housing. While the responsibility of creating the current houses crisis sits squarely with the governments that are in charge, the people left unhoused bear the brunt of the pain. Those were the people that were immediately affected by this cruel Lord's Mayor's actions, disconnected from family, community groups, frontline services like the Department of Housing. Support workers have lost contact with a number of rough sleepers. Another large group have migrated towards Riverside Drive and Orly Park. And had this Lord Mayor talked to anyone working in the housing space or living rough, they would have known that the challenges of temporary housing, how those who have had challenges with substances have stayed away to keep themselves clean, and how those who have experienced domestic violence find the streets safer than the volatile temporary housing available. Because of course, in temporary housing, wraparound services are grossly underfunded. And this has been underfunded by the same Labor and Liberal governments who have been in charge at every level. For long-term rough sleepers, a destructive consequence of the Lord Mayor's actions of not enabling people to fundamentally eat has had more dangerous consequences. As the desperation to eat increased, so did the use of hazardous gas canisters. Between Monday and Friday last week, there were three fires in Musgrave Park. These, however, are just the immediate results for each area. There are continual consequences. Support services and community groups who work closely with people sleeping rough have also been unable to provide their usual services. Removing power access prevents them from doing their jobs and keeping our community safe. As there is no power in the park that is often booked for events, the question hangs now how these events will occur without any, without dramatically increasing the cost to events or council to reconnect or disconnect. In the upcoming months, the effects affected by the power being off includes Meianjin Reggae Festival, a free community festival, Signal Flair, a barbecue, Christmas for homeless people and people in need, the Pongol Festival, a Hindu harvest festival created, celebrated by Tamil community, Panayiri, NaduK Family Fun Day, the list goes on, and community members that hire these spaces. All I've been told currently will not have access to power. I've been told that the power will not be switched on for anyone, even if they already have a park booking. Will these events continue? Will contractors be able to access power like cleaners and park maintenance, these things that are so needed in the park right now? The cruelty and the cowardice through you, Chair of the Lord Mayor knows no bounds. It actually extends beyond these two parks. I've recently learnt that the lights have been turned off at Emma Miller Place, so services that are trying to provide food to people that have nothing can't even do that with light. The cruelty and the lack of compassion is not only of this Lord Mayor though, but every LMP councillor that stands behind to support these actions. If the Lord Mayor wanted to tackle community safety, the Lord Mayor should call up his mates in One William and tell them to not cut temporary housing budget, to commit to record spending to build social and affordable housing and increase all funding for services, including wraparound services, to support those that are in temporary housing and transitioning to permanent housing. The community has been vocal and, as I found out on Friday and as I confirmed today, barbecues have been turned off in Musgrave Park, and I thank the community in their vocal support of that because it was so dangerous, these fires, they were so dangerous. Meanwhile, I compel anyone in this chamber to show an inch of compassion and support this motion.
Counselor Massey, your time's expired. Any further speakers? Counselor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on this motion, and as earlier this afternoon, I spoke about the rise of antisocial and violent behaviours that have been happening at Musgrave Park and Carilpa Point Park. The Greens political party again here tonight have been spreading misinformation for weeks. There have never been publicly accessible power outlets at Musgrave Park and Carilpa Point Park. The power outlets that they are referring to are housed within public barbecues and locked switchboards. These outlets have been repeatedly vandalised and hotwired, which is not only extremely unsafe, but has also come at a cost of over $25,000 to Brisbane ratepayers to repair. Along with the significant escalation in violence, aggressive and antisocial behaviour in these parks, there was also recently a very dangerous electrical fire within the tent encampment. This fire involved a tent that was illegally accessing one of these outlets. The fire was extremely dangerous and forced the decision for us to switch the power off. While the barbecues are operating again, other council power sources remain off due to significant risk, while phone charging services will continue to be available within walking distance of the park seven days a week. I'm sure that you'll agree that the willful destruction of public property is unacceptable and the tampering with electrical services poses an unacceptable and significant public safety risk. Our council strongly believes the violent, aggressive, antisocial behaviour occurring in these parks is not acceptable and that we have a responsibility to keep our community safe. The Greens political party approach to homelessness is simply cruel. It's cruel that they oppose housing, cruel that they want people to live in tents and cruel that the only solution they have on offer is USB chargers. So while we might be supporting this motion this evening, Chair, our council remains deeply committed to a compassionate approach to those experiencing genuine homelessness. Our officers will continue to work with people in need, connecting them with housing service providers by the state government and helping to ensure they can access the support that they require. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Counselor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I support this motion as it's the least the Lord Mayor can do to support the most vulnerable in our community. Please have a heart. We are in the worst rental housing crisis since the Great Depression. The reality of roughly 10,000 people being homeless tonight in south-east Queensland is unbearable to think about. This problem should not exist, but successive Labor and LMP governments have virtually not invested in public and social housing for decades. We are now seeing a dire situation of mass homelessness unfolding in our Brisbane community. The two major parties are relying on private property investors to fix the housing crisis, which is- to fix the housing crisis, which is completely absurd. They're causing the housing crisis and they have no intention of remedying this crisis. Shameful. We see greedy property investors artificially restricting supply, which ultimately causes hyperinflated prices for property. They lamb bank relentlessly, holding developable land off the market while they take full advantage of planning code vagueness and relaxations to speculate and maximise their profits. Meanwhile, the rent keeps rising. Nobody can find genuinely affordable housing. Hundreds of thousands of people are stuck on the social housing list due to the immense failure of all levels of government. Housing has become a commodity instead of a basic human right. The solutions are simple. They've been implemented in other cities. Finland is a great example where the current government has committed to completely eradicating homelessness by 2027, where housing comes first. To tackle the housing crisis, we need to scrap negative gearing and capital gains tax. We need a vacancy levy and legislative inclusion zoning to put downward pressure on private rental prices, meaning cheaper rents. This would obviously reduce homelessness and cut down the rapidly growing social housing waitlist. We can freeze rents for two years for wages to catch up and then cap rents. Where is the humanity in this situation? In this room, can we please have some shared empathy? Experiencing homelessness and poverty are extremely punishing and extremely harmful to one's wellbeing. For these people who are being failed by this council, life is relentless and extremely challenging. Clearly, supporting our most vulnerable community is an obvious answer, not punitive cruel control by cutting off basic services that can support people that are suffering terribly.
Further speakers?
Point of order, Chair. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner break for one hour which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that council adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Any further speakers on the motion? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on the notified motion relating to Musgrave Park and Kerupa Point. As councillor Hutton has already mentioned today, power was reinstated to the barbecues at Musgrave Park on Friday, the 1st of November, and power will be reinstated to the barbecues at Kerupa Point tomorrow. The decision to switch off power to these barbecues and the reasons why have been discussed extensively, both publicly and in this chamber. What we're seeing unfold at both Musgrave Park and Kerupa Point is the result of a culmination of factors, all of which are compounding and exacerbating the situation. Every decision this administration has made in relation to these sites has been taken with the safety of council workers, members of the public and the people sleeping rough in these parks front of mind. Now, we know that the Greens' solution to homelessness in Brisbane is USB charging points in public parks. Thankfully, the Sriranga Council is aiming a lot higher than that. Between our incredible Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme and the phenomenal work of our PSLOs, council is committed to supporting our most vulnerable residents and helping them get a proper roof over their head. In the past year, 60% of the cases reported to have people experiencing homelessness have been resolved in a timely manner through PSLO engagement. This means that our incredible PSLOs have been able to connect people experiencing homelessness with housing referrals and other support services. Now, you wouldn't know this, of course, if you got your update from the Greens councillors. It's extremely disappointing that Greens councillors in this place continue to support people that have publicly degraded and insulted our PSLOs. I'm confident councillor Massey will tell anyone that listens that the power being reinstated to barbecues at Musgrave Park and Kerupa is because of her advocacy. In case there was ever any doubt, this is not the case. Councillor Massey's so-called advocacy is about as effective as a wet tissue. Council will continue to monitor both Musgrave Park and Kerupa Point and respond to challenges accordingly. Issues such as these are incredibly complex, which is why the adults in the room are handling it.
Any further debate? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much. And I rise to speak in support of this motion put before us today. Housing insecurity and cost of living are some of the biggest issues facing people in Brisbane right now. And we know that every level of government has a role to play in addressing housing insecurity, but also in the way that we support those who are most vulnerable in our community. On this side of the chamber, we have long called for targeted support and more of it for those experiencing or at risk of homelessness and the incredibly vulnerable people living in our city. These are incredibly complex issues that require multifaceted approaches to address. We need to be working together with all levels of government and NGOs to treat these people with decency and respect, to support them to find homes and address the complex causes that lead to these situations. And yet, the LMP administration again has failed to prioritise this important work. Instead, what we see is a council that chooses to take an inhumane and punitive approach by turning off power to those who are most vulnerable, sleeping rough in Musgrave and Kerupa Point Parks. This is, of course, on the same day that we have found out that council have spent an eye-watering $137,000 on a party for the Metro for 3,000 people at $45 a head. But apparently, we cannot possibly find the resources within council to support rough sleepers, and I assume today that the LMP will vote this motion down. This is just another example where the LMP have their priorities all wrong. The LMP council and the Lord Mayor have engaged in what I think is shameful and classless rhetoric and have demonised these people. As the city's leadership, the LMP need to be supporting and advocating for the most vulnerable in our city. Instead, they've made decisions to cut power to the homeless. These decisions are so wrong and completely heartless. I've started a petition and already in a few short days, nearly 170 people have signed it to get the power back on. Today, we are all calling on the Lord Mayor and the LMP administration to please show some compassion and turn the power back on. Will you finally listen?
Councillor Strong.
Hold on, yeah, there it is. Okay. Listen, I rise to speak on this motion because I have a group in my ward that actually do work at Kerupa as well as at Anala with the homeless. Now, I know councillor Howard has met Margarita, who works in Kev Hoover Park. And she and her group work with homeless people to try to... And they do more than just give them a really good feed, by the way. It's like silver service. And they get it one day a week, on a Friday, usually. And but they actually work with them and mentor them and try to get them work, try to get them accommodation. And actually, a lot of their volunteers end up being those people that they helped. Now, they can't operate at Kerupa because there's no barbecue. And so we're disadvantaging the people that are actually doing the work with the homeless that government doesn't do, right? Probably government can't do all that. It does take those volunteer groups as well to do some of that work as well, but the government can support that. And really, all I heard from councillor Hutton was about $25,000 damage to the infrastructure, right? We've got to put people before money, right? People should always come before money. We should be able to do what we need to do to make the place safe. I totally agree with that. But we have to obviously work out different strategies of dealing with the issue. And I haven't heard any other solutions other than turn it off, turn off the power, right? And close the toilets in some cases. I think I heard that maybe a week or so ago. But it's really important that we certainly try to do everything we can as a council to help the homeless in this city. We are indirectly responsible for them, right? Yes, it's the state government thing about housing, but we can do our bit. And we've laid it out over the last number of months about what council could do more in supporting the homeless. And I've got a number of homeless people in my ward, of course, and I'm sure it's right across Brisbane. It's just not in my ward and it's certainly not at Kerupa or Musgrave Park. They're right around, but they're quite hidden at times because they sleep in cars behind petrol stations in groups so that it keeps them safe. And a few of them have occupied the parks in my ward, especially in the Anala area because we've got some really big parks. And so they can sort of just, you know, you don't see them, except during the day maybe, but a lot of the time you don't see them. And they do that to keep themselves safe, of course. But Margarita and her group, I mean, she's been interviewed by the ABC and all the channels when all this initially happened, right? And I said, well, when I get the first opportunity I get to try to advocate for the Kerupa barbecue to be turned back on because there's a lot of homeless people that counted upon her and she's not able to undertake the good work she's doing on behalf of this city. So, thank you, Chair.
Any further debate? No further debate. Right of reply. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Firstly, I want to thank everyone for their contributions. I'd like to begin by stating a couple of numbers from today. Six in Orly Park, 11 at Kerupa Point, one in Bunyappa Park and 15 in Musgrave Park. That is the number of visible tents in Kerupa. That number is no demonstration of the amount of people, but I think it's a pretty high number. That total's about 40. And to go further, thank you for your statements, councillor Strunk. Those 40 people that have just been moved around have not been mentioned at all by councillor Hutton. Interestingly enough, councillor Hutton only mentioned the cost. And of course, in mentioning this, councillor Hutton forgot to mention that the power boxes in not only Musgrave Park, not only Kerupa Point, but many parks across the city are consistently used or accidentally left open and have been used not only by people of events, but people in community. Incidentally, something that the Liberal councillors that did stand up kept saying, repeating, that the USB power points were the only solutions the Greens have offered. I'll go into all the other various solutions. But incidentally, had I been allowed to put in USB power points over the past 18 months, those power boxes wouldn't have been opened. And that would have saved the thing that councillor Hutton is most concerned about, the $25,000. But of course, most people know that we have suggested many more things than USB power points. We've suggested a vacancy levy from this council. We've suggested a major crackdown on the Airbnb, something that we haven't heard from since, from this LMP council, to ensure that rentals that used to be on the market that are now in the temporary rental market could come back on because of course, not a single development in West End will be affordable for anyone living on the streets. We've also suggested rates caps, we've also suggested the refurbishment of buildings that are unleased in the Central Business District. This was a point that me and the Lord Mayor actually agreed upon. And that was in June 2023. And since then, we haven't heard a word. We know that this LMP councillor isn't, the council isn't actually working on this. I recognise that public space liaison officers are doing an amazing job. However, they are under, 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 underfunded. We know this because literally the week that the photos in Musgrave Park were taken, public space liaison officers reduced their appearance and their support in the park from Tuesday to Wednesday mornings, Tuesday and Thursday's mornings just to Wednesday. So when we talk about a council that is saying they are doing everything is the reduction to only one day a week to connect with rough sleepers, not only at Kerupa Point, not only at Musgrave Park, but citywide, actually doing everything. I'll also go further. Councillor Howard said that there was, it's a complex issue, of course. That is undeniable. I invite councillor Howard to come with me to Musgrave Park and Kerupa Point.
Point of order, Mr Deputy Chair.
Point of order.
What councillor Massey is saying to the chamber is incorrect. The PSLOs were withdrawn from the area because of the abuse.
Councillor Howard, it is not for debate. Councillor Howard, that's not the, point of order is not for use for debate. Councillor Massey, please continue.
As I was saying, as I was saying, you know, it is a complex issue. And I do hope that councillor Howard is paying a lot of attention to this in rebuttal for trying to do everything we can after the response that happened to Panayiri. I'll just be mindful to say that I had, I called councillor Howard into a meeting to make sure that it was clear that after Panayiri's over and the temporary housing was available, that there was a big concern because of the magic round that temporary housing wouldn't be available. Of course, councillor Howard did not actually know this and had then had to contact state government. I am on the ground. We know that power, and now, of course, turning on barbecues is really important. The barbecues specifically, the QPS told me personally, they talked to council because they advised that the canisters, because the barbecues were turned off, were the most deadly part. Be honest, show some compassion.
Councillor Massey, your time has expired. Now I put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those that can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Massey, seconded by councillor Chongwa. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and ten against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please return to your seat.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor. Yep.
I would like to move a procedural motion to take the motion that's lying on the table concerning the zebra crossing at Ipsatrow, Neekeburn Road, Annalee, off the table.
Seconded.
So it's moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Edelman. That the motion... That the motion from 14th May 2024 be taken off the table. This is procedural motion. So now I put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those that can say no? The ayes have it. A further speaker on the motion?
Point of order, Deputy Speaker.
Yep. Point of order.
Have we got a copy of that that's been circulated? Sorry, I wasn't talking to the Deputy Mayor.
There's a copy circulated to all councillors.
Sorry?
Yeah, there's a copy circulated to all councillors.
Okay, thank you.
So whilst the clerk distributing the motion, I'll read it. The motion from 14th May 2024 has been taken off the table. I will restate the motion for the chamber while it is being redistributed. So Brisbane City Council urgently install a zebra crossing or one back crossing. a zebra crossing or wombat crossing on the uncontrolled slip lane, intersection of Ipswich Road and Ekerben Road and Anali, allocating funding from infrastructure for Brisbane Programme Two, as it has at similar locations in Norman Park. Any further debate?
Point of order, Chair.
Sorry. Sorry. Yes. Oh, sorry. Yep. Counselor Johnson and Givney. So, yep, so any other councillors can enter debate now. So it resumed from where it left in fourteenth of May. Yep, Counsel Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Miss Chair. And it's been a little while since this, uh, this motion was debated in this place. And it pretty had a momentum at the time of debate that we have lost by laying it on the, the administration has lost by laying it on the table. And I think part of their logic for laying it on the table was that this referred to a budget item. This was referring to the future budget. Now, this, this, um, this crossing point is actually in my electorate, but Councilor Johnston has represented this area. And both of us agree that this intersection needs to be made safe by putting in lights or making the actual crossing point to the intersection safe, as has happened at a number of places around the city. And in particular, I think of one intersection where this has happened down at Gao Street and Ipswich Road. And right adjacent to that, we have the deaf society of Queensland. So part of doing that has been to enable a safe crossing for people who are experiencing issues with their hearing. And similarly, at this site, we have a number of people who use this particular crossing who are affected by visual issues in terms of visu- blindness. We have the, um, the blind society there on Ipswich Road. So part of installing, um, calling for improvements at this intersection at the uncontrolled slip lane is about making this intersection safer for the residents who use it, for people who have a disability who use it, for the many schoolchildren who use it, and the many parents who use it. So I don't think this, I, I, I was surprised the LNP wanted to hold off funding this, uh, because it was just such a no-brainer. They've done it at so many other intersections. So I would encourage the LNP and the chamber to fund the improvements at this intersection because it just makes perfect sense. It's something that's reasonable and something the residents would expect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further debate? Council Messi?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on to this motion briefly. The importance of pedestrian safety is something critical to the work that we do here in council. And the reason it's so important is while people are drivers, people are cyclists, people are scooters, people are rollerbladers, people are skateboarders, everyone in the city is a pedestrian. And so when we look at the opportunities to create a more pedestrian-safe city, the idea of a zebra crossing or a wombat crossing in what is what I would call a high, um, a high, a high, uh, a high movement zone and a high conflict zone, right? And when I talk about conflict, the interaction between cars, pedestrians, cyclists, scooters, and otherwise, um, we, we have to look at them as upgrades. We have to consider them as upgrades that we can deliver to the city. Now, Councilor Johnston, through you, Chair, has moved this motion for the betterment of her community to try to enable safety for residents, safety for schoolchildren, safety to people that, um, have disabilities, um, and safety for everyone involved. And this should be considered as a positive thing. This should be viewed upon as a positive thing, even though it was in May that this was put on and then put on the table. This should be viewed as a positive thing. It, unlike through you, Chair, I am not surprised, because we know that the Lord Mayor stated very quick, clearly, in budget debates in dunes, that any upgrades like this, crossings, pedestrian safety, intersection, et cetera, et cetera, are downgrades. It would be, I believe, in the Liberal Council, administrations, councils' best interest to counteract a very public statement by potentially triggered Lord Mayor, calling pedestrian safety, calling for safety of everyone, noting again that everyone is a pedestrian, a downgrade, by actually applying money to this and proving that the safety of pedestrians across our city is a positive thing. And I know that maybe that won't happen here tonight, but please, please bear this in mind. Every single one of these pedestrian safety improvements, every single crossing, every local traffic calming, every wombat crossing, every intersection that is rejected by this Liberal administration, again sets the precedent based on what the Lord Mayor so publicly said, that all of these are considered downgrades. And let it be clear, we know that across all our wards, people want these upgrades. People want to be safe crossing roads. People want their children to be safe walking to school and crossing roads. So please, in what is a predominantly empty chamber, I, I compel Liberal administrations to go against the leaders' words, that these are all downgrades, and instead, vote for pedestrian safety, which is for the safety of all residents in Brisbane.
Any further debate? Counselor Collier.
Um, I'll just keep my remarks really brief. I, um, the motion, yeah, just five minutes. No, I'm kidding. Um, the, um, motion talks about the location in Norman Park, and I just want to talk about what a positive impact that has had in my community. And I want to thank the Commonwealth Government for funding that project through the Black Spot Programme. Residents have already come to me in the time that this project's been completed over the last year and just said, it's made a huge difference to a notorious local hotspot. Um, this is a spot that's next to a train station, next to a very, very, um, high-use footy club. There's cricket, there's shops, there's a lot going on, childcare centres, churches nearby, petrol stations as well. And just want to, um, put on the record my thanks to the council officers who put this programme up for funding, thanks to the Commonwealth Government for delivering that funding for the community. This has had an incredible positive impact for the residents and, and visitors to Norman Park. And it would only make sense that it would be considered elsewhere in the city. Um, you know, it's a relatively, in the grand scheme of things, actually a relatively low-cost solution for pedestrian safety and for motorists' safety, and it's a common sense outcome.
Any further debate? As there's no further debate, I will now put the motion to the vote. Those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those that can say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by Council Cassidy, seconded by Council Massey. Those in favour, uh, sorry, ayes goes to my right, ayes to my left. Please ring the bell.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and ten against.
The motion is lost. Councilors, please return to your seats.
Thank you.
Councilors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item AB on the agenda. Counselor Cassidy, would you please move the motion?
I move that this council introduces an exemption for the rates paper bill fee beginning on January one, twenty twenty-five for pensioners and concession cardholders.
Seconded.
It was, it was moved by Council Cassidy and seconded by Council Collier. That this council introduces an exemption for the residential rates paper bill fee beginning on January one, twenty twenty-five for pensioners and concession cardholders. Is any debate? Counsel Cassidy?
Thanks, Deputy Chair. This Lord Mayor and his regime are sneaking in rates and charges in every way they possibly can. And this newly announced fee for paper rates is no exemption, is no exception. Uh, they've run cash reserves dry, blown the budget on big projects, lost sight of the basics. We've heard about that all day today. In fact, they've lost sight of why they were elected in the first place. According to the Lord Mayor, he hadn't thought about taxing pensioners who prefer to receive a bill in the mail than scan a QR code and get online before the last election. But we don't really believe that on this side. Um, all in a bid to bring in an estimated two million dollars to make the LNP's budget bottom line look better after years of mismanagement and waste is not something that is done just overnight and is not a quick decision. It comes down to priorities. Now, that money, we know, could have been found elsewhere, didn't have to cost rate payers extra for receiving their rates bill. We found out last week that council is paying, uh, five point seven million dollars to Australia Post for unaddressed mail, including the self-promoting Living in Brisbane newsletter. Um, but it's truly puzzling to think that this LNP council will continue to post that hard copy newsletter to every single resident while introducing a tax on rates bills. Now, let's not forget, rates are taxes themselves. They're in all, uh, for all intents and purposes, they are taxes. So the LNP are now taxing you to receive your tax bill, basically. Uh, this charge that we're talking about tonight was buried even deeper than the fifty percent increase in fees for people paying their rates on a credit or debit card. And I imagine, uh, in this cost of living crisis, there's an increasing number of people paying their rates using a credit or debit card. It was not mentioned, this, this pensioner tax was not mentioned at the Lord Mayor's press conferences around budget time. It was not mentioned in the Lord Mayor's speech. So we wonder what other fees and charges this regime is going to sneak through next year. This LNP regime is shaking down rate payers for every cent and dollar it can, and it needs to stop. Rate payers really are paying more and getting less. Uh, you can't believe this Lord Mayor and his regime when they say this isn't a pensioner tax. There's a very simple reason why. Other organisations, service, service providers and councils who have these charges for paper bills exempt pensioners and concession cardholders from these charges. Many businesses, including, as we heard earlier today, Telstra, Foxtel, Vodafone, Energy Australia, Origin Energy, among others, provide exemptions for pensioners, disabled, disadvantaged or concession cardholders for their paper bill fee. The Queensland Government provides a number of ways in which you could pay your vehicle registration, for instance. But crucially, it has not chosen to charge customers who receive their notices in the mail. Urban Utilities, Unity Water don't have a paper bill fee either. Let's look at neighbouring councils, the most appropriate comparison. Gold Coast, Redland City, Ipswich and Logan do not charge for this, do not charge this fee. And since the Lord Mayor has become entirely obsessed with the Moreton Bay Regional Council over the last two weeks, uh, sorry, the Moreton Bay City Council, I should say, they charge a paper bill fee, but of course exempt pensioners from the same pensioner tax that this LNP council wants to bring in. If you're a self-underretiree, concession cardholder or receiving a pension, no sir is the same. So it appears that Brisbane will be the only council in southeast Queensland cruel enough to put this tax onto pensioners. And I say shame on the LNP.
Any further speaker? Council Strunk.
Okay. Yes, um, uh, thank you, Chair, Deputy Chair. Um, listen, the fact is that the last census, fourteen percent of people over the age of sixty-five do not have a computer or a phone, or for that matter, a, a course of internet plan, you know, through NBN or whatever service provider you can, you can get it through nowadays. So if you work out, there's like four hundred and fifty thousand rate payers, um, fourteen percent of them do not have a computer or a phone or a plan. Now, why should they be targeted? Why should they be treated differently, right? Why should they be penalised, I should say, for not having a computer or a phone? And that, this is, this is the census that was taken like five years ago, too, by the way. We've got another one coming up soon. Um, and so when I, when I saw that figure, I thought, well, you know, I mean, there's a kind of, this is kind of, this is, many thousands of people are going to be charged this. And, you know, I, I, I have, I have the pleasure of actually representing probably one of the more socially economic areas, more depressed areas in, 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 in the, in Brisbane. Um, we have a lot of pensioners. Uh, they're, they're not a lot, a lot of money, of course. And some of those pensioners, and they own their homes, by the way, so they can't get into public housing. They actually own their homes. Uh, but that, they, they, virtually every fortnight, they're down to their last few dollars. And this is, this, this, this two dollars, you know, Lord Mayor, this, you know, it's only two dollars, you know? Well, sometimes that's all they got left at the end of their fortnight, right? Um, and now this is just another nail in their financial budget, their, their, you know, their household budget. Um, so it may not be a lot to him or a lot to any of us here in the, in the room. But I've, I've actually had firsthand, um, knowledge of this because I've had, I've had some of these pensioners, because we've got two pensioner groups that meet in the, in the, in the civic hall, uh, on a, on a weekly basis. And, um, and they've told these stories. And, 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 and most of them are actually homeowners, actually. So they really do it tough to try to pay the rates to start with. And now they're going to pay for their bill. Two dollars for their bill. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just ludicrous when you think about it. No one should actually have to pay for a bill, right? I mean, uh, they pay for this in their rates anyways. They pay for the service to actually send the bill to them so they can pay it on a, uh, on a quarterly basis. And, and, and it's just, it's just incredible. I just can't believe how miserly and how unthinking this council is on this particular issue, you know, when it comes to, when it comes to those that, that really do it really tough every fortnight, trying to make ends meet, especially with the cost of living increases that we've all experienced, you know, uh, not just them, of course. Uh, and I just think it's something that should be set aside and, uh, and, and not follow through on because I, I just think, you know, it's, it's two million dollars to the bottom, bottom line. But, you know, for what we spend on a lot of other stuff, including parties, um, you know, I mean, for, for all we know, I don't know what the party for the, for the bridge is going to cost, but if you add those three parties together, I mean, you're probably getting close to the two million dollars, uh, or, or at least a million dollars anyways. And, um, so there's, 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 there goes the savings that you've, that you were going to make on not sending the bills out by, by post. So anyways, I support the motion, of course. Thank you, Chair.
Any further debate? Counsel Collier.
I think today has been an absolute illuminating demonstration of just how heartless the LNP really are deep in their core. Because, yeah, and they have shown their true colours today because not five minutes ago, this LNP administration voted to withhold power to those who are the most vulnerable in our city, and now not one councillor.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Claimed misrepresentation.
Haven't spoken.
Noted.
Point of order.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is not true. The power is connected.
Point of order.
Yes, point of order, Counsel Collier.
It's my understanding that you have to have spoken during the debate to claim misrepresentation. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. Okay. Yep. Uh, Counsel Howard has spoken during the meeting, so she can claim to be misrepresented.
Point of order, Chair.
Excuse me. Well, I've got to advise that. Well, I've got the advice that Councillor Howard has spoken during the meeting, so she can claim misrepresentation. Yep. So, yeah. Councillor Collier, would you like to continue?
That's new, that's a new ruling, new rule according to the LNP in this council. And if we're going to talk about the rules in council, how great are the family friendly hours? Aren't they just fantastic? They work so well. I'm obviously being sarcastic. Yes. Yes. And, and I understand that, you know, the LNP in, in the state, one of the, one of their top priorities is of course removing family friendly hours. So I don't know if the acrobatics that has been on display by the Lord Mayor has backflipped on every other major issue. Maybe he'll backflip on his supposed family friendly hours as well to fall in line with his colleagues now at One William Street. Anyways, I digress. Today has been an absolute masterful display of just how heartless the LNP really can be. And not one councillor from the administration side of the chamber has gotten up to defend this cruel pensioner tax. Let's call it what it is and be really honest. We have seen the most shameful comments from the LNP who have doubled down on taking money, reaching into the, some of the most financially restricted people within our community, reaching into their pockets and taking out more money than they ever have before. Because let's not forget, under this administration, rates are up, up, up and going up. And then we'll add on top of that another pensioner tax every year. The LNP find new and creative and cruel ways to put the people who are on the fringes of society in an even worse position. And I just want to read out something that someone had commented to me before when I mentioned the vote earlier about cutting power to the homeless people in Kirilpa and Musqueip. This, this resident of mine said, not surprising from the LNP. Poor people, vulnerable people, people on the edge don't count to them. I couldn't have said it better myself.
Any further debate? Oh, sorry, Councillor Howard, your misrepresentation.
Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair. Councillor Collier has misrepresented by saying that the electricity has been turned off to the barbecues. Both councillor Hutton and I have indicated that that's not the case.
Further debate? Councillor Messi.
Thank you Deputy Chair. I rise to speak to this motion briefly. We have seen an incredible face to the LNP administration today. An incredible face. It's almost like a mask off moment. Because here again, what we are experiencing is a lack of understanding about people, but again, a focus just on numbers. And we know if we focus on numbers, that this year in the 2024-25 budget, that rates revenue increased, but of course, the budget contracted by $300 million. And what we have here for some of the most marginalised people, not everyone, not every pensioner is marginalised, but there are of course marginalised pensioners in the community, is a new way to increase revenue for a council that is running out of money. And when I say that, I say that because the amount, the $2 million that is suggested might not mean a lot to a lot of people. Millions are unrecognisable, right? It's an unfathomable amount. But to individual people, to individual pensioners, that does make a difference, especially on top of the rates that they're already paying. I know this because I speak to pensioners in my ward. I, I know that because just recently I spoke to a pensioner that was getting me to help them transfer $30 from one GoCard to another because that's all they had. And, and of course, when we come down to it, there's no way that you can say that this is not revenue building. This is the unsaid here, even though it's pretty obvious. This is about delivering more revenue, delivering more revenue, $2 million to a council, an LNP administration that is cutting budget, delaying projects, delivering a rates revenue increase year by year. This is $2 million being fleeced out of pensioners when there are parties being thrown, when there are luncheons being thrown, when there are international trips being thrown. And the reason why this is such a face-off moment is because there's no pretending anymore. It's impossible for anyone in this chamber to pretend that the budget is in a good position. I mean, I've heard of, I mean, these could be just rumours. Again, this is what I've just heard, that even this council is potentially looking at creating an increase in revenue by charging for people to go up the Brisbane Watch Tower. I hope that's not, I hope that's not true. I hope that's not true. The people's place. We will try to generate revenue for something. I know I was up in that watchtower. I know I was up in that watchtower as a child and I, you know, gave me a love not only for this place that should have respect, but also for the city of Brisbane. So what this is, is about revenue building. And we're taking revenue from some of the most marginalised people. And that is a true shame. But there is no surprise here. Right? When we try to protect people, pedestrians, which is everyone in Brisbane, these are considered downgrades. When we try to protect people, the most marginalised in our community, they are put in more dangerous situations where they have to deal with dangerous gas canisters that could have killed someone. That's why the barbecues are on. And when we have a choice to ensure that some of the most marginalised people aren't used for $2 million because this council doesn't have enough money and instead doesn't come clean about not having enough money, we choose to punish these people more. And that is the face-off moment.
Any further debate?
Yes, thank you, Miss Chow. I rise to, to support this motion. And just to, to say, tonight's meeting has been very revealing for me. In fact, the whole day has been very revealing for me. And the gaslighting that goes on in this chamber by this LNP council is incredible. It's incredible. And the gaslighting by the Lord Mayor towards pensioners is, like, the Lord Mayor's not here. Let's put that on the record. The Lord Mayor's not here. He, he appears for his half hour performance and, and then leaves. So none of these messages get through to him. And frankly, he doesn't give a crap about these residents or about the fact that they're getting this charge. This, like, what I've seen tonight is inflated, hubris of, of a magnificent level. And it's actually, I think it's probably because of the win they've had at the state level and their inflated egos and their, their, their overwhelming majority in this chamber. But it's delivering really bad results, certainly for the area I represent. So let's, here's some feedback my office has received. So there's a number of these. Jane phoned regarding the $1.98 fee for printed rates notice. She said her husband wouldn't even know how to turn on a computer. She's very concerned because he might have to go away to care. And she can't, can't help him in regards to this. Then we've got another resident from Nathan. He and his wife are 85 years old. They don't want to get online. They require hard copies of bills to keep records of and place them in folders. I know my folks are like that. He receives exemptions from Suncorp and his electricity provider. He requested the Lord Mayor actually look out for, for elderly pensioners, not do them over. Or Dennis, he's a pensioner who doesn't have an email. He doesn't think pension, pensioners should have to pay extra for their bills. Or Jean, she's upset with the fee. It makes her feel like there's no option. She said she's been scammed before online and likes getting hard copy mail. She's saying, sure, $7.92 mightn't seem a lot to politicians, but it's a lot to her. And then she goes on, how cynical is it? The council is saying they, they can win one of $20, $100 vouchers when you sign up. She's just saying, it's insulting, Lord Mayor. Another one. He wants me to pass on his comments. He says it's grossly unfair for pensioners who are struggling to be slugged with an extra $2 rates notice. He requires it for his disability. Irene also contacted me protesting about the $2 charge. She believes it's discriminatory to pensioners who do not have the internet and they don't have a printer. She doesn't have a credit card as she gives her daughter cash to pay her bills online. These are regular folk from my ward who contacted me saying these are the issues for them. Is there anyone over there with a heart? Is there anyone over there listing?
Councillor Griffith. This is just. Councillor Griffith, under the provisions of section 41, 13 of the meeting's local law, on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of all notified motions, I shall now put the current motion to the meeting without further amendment or debate. I will now put the motion. Those in favour say aye? Those against say no? The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Yep. Clerk, please read the result.
Mister Deputy Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 10 against.
The motion has lost. Councillors, that's the end of the meeting. I declare meeting closed.